I'm going to call to order the Issaquah City Council Land and Shore Committee this May 3, 2018. I'm Chair Stacey Goodman. To my right is Councilmember Vicki Hunt, and she is substituting for Councilmember Tola Martz tonight. And to my far right is Councilmember Paul Winterstein. We have several people in the audience tonight. Welcome, everybody. We have three items on the agenda. The first two are informational only, and so they are each slated to take 10 minutes apiece. And that's about the time I'm planning on spending on those two items. The third item is Central Issaquah District Visions, and I'm expecting that that's going to take up the bulk of the time of our meeting tonight. So let's get started. Timber Ridge easement modifications is the first item. And presenting, we have Lucy Sloane, Land Development Manager. Hi, Lucy.
Hi. Good evening. So this is a quick introduction of an item that the Agenda Bill has not been sent forward yet. We are looking for some guidance and feedback from council as we prepare the Agenda Bill for this. In terms of a brief history, the site development permit for Timber Ridge was approved in 2004. It was planned as a multi-phase project. The image on the left is from the site development permit and identifies two of the items that are at play tonight. One is that originally there was a road, Osprey Lane, that went between the overall loop road around Timber Ridge and also home occupations that were located on the northeast corner of the project. As LCS prepared for Phase Two, they came to us and asked for a couple of modifications. One of those was that Osprey Lane would not actually go through the building but be replaced by a pedestrian tunnel, and that the home occupations be residences instead of small businesses. And those were approved. So now that they are completing construction of Phase Two, they need to do some dedications of easements and right-of-way to complete the Phase Two project. These include dedication of the rest of the roadway around the south end of the site, dedication of the land between the road and Parcel 17B, an easement area for slope maintenance related to the road, correcting the easement where Osprey Lane is not going through and it's just a pedestrian tunnel, and some swapping of pedestrian and plaza easements in the northeast corner where the, what they call the accessory building is located. This would result in a net increase of about 4,200 square feet of pedestrian facilities. And though the pedestrian plaza easement in the northeast corner is going to be reduced, it still exceeds the minimum that was established in the site development permit. So for us, these are mostly housekeeping things, but we want to have a, it is the council's decision. So we want to make sure that we are prepared to incorporate and respond to council concerns associated with this.
Okay. So you're seeking some sort of feedback from the committee. I want to be sensitive to the fact that providing, this is not a substitute for the council providing information.
Of course not.
So it's, so it wouldn't be looked at as the council or the committee giving direction. It would just be to help give you any insights into anything that, any questions we might have, concerns we might have. So...
And that's an excellent point. When we're before the Land and Shore Committee or any council committee, we are simply working with the committee to assist in making that recommendation back to the full council, not to represent the concerns of the entire council.
Great. Questions, concerns, feedback that might be helpful to Lucy?
The house occupation request to change that. Could you expand on the rationale for why that was originally house occupation, which I believe is commercial, a commercial use of areas owned as residential, and then why they're asking for, why they are requesting the change?
So that change has already been approved, but I'm happy to explain that because that was part of their building permit. The footprint of this area did not change. The home occupation is an accessory use to residential activities, and that area of the building had a very tall blank wall, and there was a concern that that was a very prominent corner. And so in working with the applicant, we were trying to identify uses that would engage the street level of the building. They put these, sort of, as you're correct, they looked like retail or commercial space, even though it was an accessory use to the overall Timber Ridge facility. They were never, they never, we had sort of thought, you know, if an architect, or lawyer, or therapist, et cetera, et cetera, retires to this community, they might be interested in part-time work, and having that kind of space might be useful to support the professional people who might be living in Timber Ridge. Those uses were never occupied. And so they instead proposed, and we would have been happy from the beginning to have residential uses. They did not want to put residential uses in there. So now they have proposed to not only, or have, are under construction for not only putting residences in there, but actually connecting it with an elevator into the full building, which again was something we had requested, but they just didn't feel was warranted until they had been living with the Phase One construction for about 10 years.
One other question. On point five of the memo, there's the request swap of pedestrian and open space easement to better match what was constructed. And I think you, I think you might have touched on this, but they're swapping, it's not, it's a swap, but it's, is it the same area?
So that's a good point. I think swap may not have been the best word choice. In studying this a little more closely, the original easement is the area that you see here that has the diagonal blue lines. Unfortunately, it was recorded as both a pedestrian and access, and a plaza access easement. The problem is the pedestrian easement was needed to get to the various doorways that were constructed along the edge of this accessory building. And there was a plaza requirement. And so you couldn't really tell which area was intended for plaza and which area was intended for the access easement. So now we are, we have clearly identified the area that would be plaza down here at the south end. It was required to be 700 square feet. They are retaining, I think, over 900 square feet of plaza. So we're getting more area than we did before. They are asking to relinquish this sort of pink area, I don't know if it shows this pink on the screen, this area here, which would become a large landscape bed, and then this area along the building. It's confusing. I'm glad you asked because it's hard to explain.
Anything else? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. So I think, are there folks here specifically for this item? Raise your hand if you're here that you want to comment on this item. All right. Seeing none.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lucy. Look at that, less than 10 minutes. Second item on our agenda, Agenda Bill 7533, First Major Amendment to the Costco Development Agreement. This is informational only because procedurally, it's now out of committee.
Right. So you guys recommended approval of the amendment to the Costco agreement at the last committee meeting, and, but subsequent to that meeting, there were some things that came up internal to Costco, some concerns that they had about what the city and state parks were going to do in terms of land uses at the state park. And so as Costco shared that information with us, we had expected there to be maybe a small revision that I could have just shared with the full council when this comes forward, but it got to be much bigger than what I had anticipated in terms of just its visual impact. I don't think the content, and I'm trying to get to it, so sorry for me scrolling through all this. So basically, the amendment, or the language that's being proposed to be revised, shows up as a red line in the attachment to the Agenda Bill, I believe. Am I in the wrong space? Hang on. I apologize. Let me go back and look at...
So as I recall, it was added language that makes it clear that Costco retains the ability based on land uses as well as...
So what it says is basically if the city and state parks want to put something that exceeds the scope of the traffic analysis into, into the, into the park, that Costco could ask for the, could ask for the Project Three to go ahead and move forward. Because you remember, the whole premise of this amendment was to give us a year to delay the beginning of the construction of Project Three, which is 12th Avenue and SR 900. And what this proposed language says, and I apologize, I would have gotten it up earlier. I've had less than an organized day.
Would you like a paper copy?
Paper copy's not going to do anybody any good. Thank you, though.
It was on your screen in the middle.
It was on the first screen?
Yeah. Go back, go to the back there. No. Right about 20 down, Costco's, what he, a first amendment, day of April.
Let me take a look.
You got the same name of the document.
It was, the edits are in a new Section 9, so this is not it?
Okay.
So, yeah, sorry about that.
Email that you can...
I don't have email open. So, so let me say this. Okay. So...
Want to give me the thumb drive? I have electronic copy.
So I'll ask a question while, we'll go ahead. If you're going to describe it...
So right now, as you mentioned earlier, this Agenda Bill's at full council, and it's for recommendation for approval. I think what we're trying to discern here this evening is, is there any substance or concern about the proposed red line that would want, that would want the committee to change its motion and remand it back, or to provide that as an alternative motion to the Agenda Bill so that when this comes forward, rather than act on it on the 7th, which is what the intention is, it would come back to committee in June for a more complete discussion. So I think that's what we're trying to decide tonight is, and Rich Olin from Costco's here. If you want to ask Costco any questions about the proposed language, Patrick Mulaney, their attorney who drafted the languages here. So I think that's what we're trying to come to terms on tonight.
So I think we should have, I don't know that I've heard a description sufficient for people in the audience or people watching of what the substance of the change is. And so we need to get to the point where it's not just on the screen, but somebody needs to tell us, tell us what they think it says so that we all understand.
Costco...
And then my first question is going to be, has the city's legal counsel reviewed it?
The city's legal counsel has not reviewed it because I just got it. This one right here?
Yeah. And it has red line marks.
So some of this is just clarification stuff. This is the change down here, and I will read you through it. So it says, "Future land use consistency with Lake Simamish State Park: Traffic Impact Analysis. The parties agree that the land uses..."
So Keith, I'm not sure that's super helpful to read in the middle of a contract. Could one of you three endeavor to tell us what it says, just in layman's terms? Because I think if we read this, it's...
I'm Patrick Mulaney from Foster Pepper. The amendment really addresses, the concept was that the traffic impacts from the state park are going to occur from two things. One is going to be the movement of the entrance possibly closer to the SR 900 intersection. The second thing would be the land uses that might be intensified, or new uses have been brought into the park. So that's what the study is, to some degree, going to kind of look at. The issue came up that, we talk about uses 1 through 17. In the resolution, there's a development concept, it's called, and that's part of the agreement between the city and state parks that is called their partnering agreement. And for the most part, we talked to our traffic consultant, and uses 1 through 17 seem like they're going to be perfectly fine. The issue arose that there was a catch-all use that really was undefined, and that brought up the subject of, well, what if like all the boat launch traffic suddenly had to go through that intersection, or it was something that was so unanticipated that it was outside the scope of actually what was even being studied. And so the rest of the language then is really, it addresses timing for the most part, because what it says is, if the uses are identified in time for them to be included in the traffic study, then they'll be included. But the more likely scenario is that State Parks isn't going to have its EIS done until afterwards, so their use mix might not be. What Keith had said, and he was very helpful in, A, pointing out the use matrix in the agreement, and then also saying that from the city's perspective, whatever happens has to meet concurrency. It has to be consistent with the findings of the traffic study that's done. And so what this says is, if that occurs in, if the uses are identified in time for them to be incorporated in the traffic study, then they'll be incorporated, and then Costco will have its rights, which it already has in the agreement, under Section 8. If the uses come in later, which is the more likely scenario, then all it says is that the city commits that whatever the use mix turns out to be, it will be consistent with the traffic study findings, meaning that it'll meet, it will fit within the envelope of trips that the traffic study identifies as the appropriate amount that will be created by the new intersection improvement.
Thank you.
Okay.
So it is for information only. I would, if we have questions, you can ask them. Then the next, if you don't, then you don't. Then the next issue would be to talk about what the, you know, we get asked for public comment, and then to talk about what the options are procedurally. And I know, I think you had some, maybe had some ideas, maybe not. I have some thoughts. So do you want to get public comment, or you guys have more questions, have any questions?
Can I have any questions?
Sure. Okay. Public comment. Oh, sure. Sorry.
Well, I'm not sure this solves the traffic problem, because remember, our concurrency now is just trips in a bucket, and it doesn't mean that any of the projects would be necessarily in the state parks, Costco area, to offset the potential increase in traffic from the state park. And so, while this might feel safe, I don't think that Costco has quite gotten a handle on what happens if, if Lake Simamish State Park decides it's going to pop a lot of trips onto their section of the roads. If I was Costco, I would probably try to make some requirements that more than the potential SEPA impact road projects be put in place if these new trips go into the state park, because concurrency is not going to cut that mustard the way we have it now. Oh, that was almost pro Costco. They didn't faint, though.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Can we take it this side first?
Sure.
Good evening. Rich Olin from Costco. Patrick did an excellent job explaining what went into the drafting. I just want to clarify a couple of things. One is that I apologize for the short notice as to what you received. I take full responsibility for that. Keith had nothing to do with any delays that, or any undue pressure on you. He's been great to work with, and we appreciate it. We just flat out missed an issue, and we identified it in time to not sign an agreement that left a huge hole. Patrick explained what that would be, for these things that could come up later, and we wouldn't have had the protections that we worked hard to put into the agreement. So, but fortunately, we found it in time. All I can say is that the city staff has identified these changes as non-substantive. We agree with that. That'll be up for you, to you, to decide. I would respectfully ask that if you agree with that, that you allow this to go forward to the councils so that we can stay on the schedule for hopefully the council approval, and therefore get on with the traffic study, and ultimately the road design and such that the city wants, and of course that Costco wants also, because we would like the road to go in as soon as possible because of us building our, our new building. So my sincere apologies. It was my responsibility. We missed it. I'm sorry about that. Keith was great, and hopefully you can move this forward if you're so inclined. Thank you for considering it.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to this item? Okay. Seeing none. I do have one question, timing. If it, if the recommend, if the, if the council were to remand this back to Land and Shore at its meeting on what, Monday? Is it coming on Monday?
So yes, it's supposed to be on council's...
May 7. Okay. To come back in, in June, first Thursday of June, what, what thoughts do you or Costco have about that? Is it, is there a timing issue?
So the timing issue is, we were setting up the contract, so if you remember last time, we talked about moving the end date from December of '18 to April of '19. And part of that was, because we were getting a late start, you know, we, the question for the administration is, are we going to move forward with that contract with Jacobs or CH2M Hill? Before you guys approve this amendment, it's a little bit, it's a little bit cart before the horse. So, so what I don't know, to answer your question, is if this waits till June, do we wait another month to start CH2M Hill, Jacobs on their work, doing, starting the TIA that's associated with this amendment? That's what I don't know. Sorry.
Any other questions? One, so I guess the only, I don't know that I have any, that I had any super heartburn reading it, but of course, we just got it. Our legal counsel hasn't reviewed it. So I don't feel comfortable sort of informally suggesting to the full council that we adopt it. So I think we either think about changing the motion at the council and why, when we get there on Monday, or we can see if legal counsel can review it in time and let us know at the full council meeting if there are any issues with it. It's not before us now, so we can't make a formal recommendation. We can just kind of help provide some feedback to, that's the way I see it, unless you two see it differently. Any other thoughts or ideas about that?
You're suggesting perhaps then on Monday, and I don't know if it would be on regular business, I assume it's a...
It's a hearing.
It's a hearing. We still have to complete the public hearing. That's correct. Okay. And just to add to what something Stacy said, so Keith, working late, it got to us around 9:40 last night, and I had no opportunity to look at it before now. And so the, so I appreciate the testimony that we've heard, the explanation, and your assessment of these changes. I would be okay if, like Stacy said, if we can get our city attorneys' comments, and I'd be willing to make full consideration of the amended proposal during regular business next Monday.
You okay with that? All right. Super appreciate the mea culpa. Thank you very much. Dr. Keith, thanks you. Thanks. All right. Thank you. See you probably Monday.
(laughing).
Next item on the agenda...
Good night. Thanks.
Will not be so quick. Agenda Bill 7344, Central Issaquah District Visions. We did not have a moratorium update tonight, did we?
No.
So maybe you can give a brief one now and say that this is the last, well, we have one that's before the full council, is, that is also Monday, I believe?
Absolutely. So I noticed that on the agenda as well. It was sadly missing. So inclusionary housing was a very thoughtful conversation last Land and Shore meeting. You all spent over an hour, I think, going through that, and what it was telling us. That is at the council on the 7th, under regular business. The second and final moratorium work item is the visions, Agenda Bill 7344, which is on our docket this evening to talk through. And we gave ourselves a couple hours to, I think, try and navigate this one and see if we can get to a place where it makes sense. So...
So can I, I did watch the meeting, and outstanding issues are the developer obligations, and what else? There's that...
So we talked about the developer obligations, and the other piece I think we need to land is the green necklace, and whether it is included as part of the visions, or whether we want to put it somewhere else and just make a reference to the green necklace as part of the vision document. So I think those two things are what, if we can get through both of those, that would be a great night.
Okay. So...
And one thing before we move to those, Stacy?
Sure.
I know that the inclusionary zoning was an area you had real interest in, so I'm glad to hear you watched the meeting. And actually, since that meeting, I think I've thought about it a little bit more, and I think I understand that material a little bit more, so I'm, I'm ready for what we recommended when it comes back to full council, but I just wanted to, because it's come out of committee, and now it's in front of the full council, I don't know if, if outside of meeting time, you wanted to talk about it with anybody or any little bit more, but I'm available to do that.
Hey, thank you.
Because I was, I didn't complete, when you wanted more, I didn't quite get the technical reason why, but now I do. And I just feel like maybe discussing it, I guess we're going to have a chance at full council meeting, but it's an offer I'm just making.
The, thank you. The green, so the developer obligations, I think, is going to be a lot of weed work.
Yep.
So in the weeds work, I'm wondering if it makes sense to talk about the green necklace first?
We can do that. So you guys...
Unless you have other ideas. Unless you have other ideas.
We're all big.
There are not 92 questions with the Green Necklace.
So, the Green Necklace, so you guys got this with this packet. Last time, the Parks Director Jeff Watling was here, and he, we had included one page, the map, in, in the vision document, and kind of a brief summary of what the Green Necklace was. And one of the requests was to, unless I misheard, was to think about putting the whole 22 pages into the vision. So, this document is, consider it like a subset of the park plan. The park plan is citywide, and Parks Department and Jeff had their consultant interact specifically with Planning Commission and the task force and the public who were working on the visions to kind of unpack that portion of the park plan, which was in Central Issaquah and was called the Green Necklace. But as, as I think Tola was having issues with last time, this is the first time you guys have seen this. And even though it's gone through somewhat of a part, of a public process through the Park Board, there's going to be a number of questions, and you received some from the rallies today about at least a couple of pieces of this plan. And what it says to me is, there wants to be a bigger conversation about some of those pieces, like, you know, do we want to presuppose, you know, bike lanes on Gilman when we have a Gilman corridor study going? I mean, that's, I don't know. That seems maybe like we want the corridor study to dictate ultimately what happens on Gilman. And likewise, the rallies also took issue with number seven, which is the trail along Tibbetts Creek. And that's definitely described in their development agreement, and they felt like there was maybe a disconnect between how it was being described in the park plan or the Green Necklace, and how it was being described in the development agreement. So, so it's, what it points to me is, is this needs, and it's just starting its, I think, review process with the council.
So, can we just be clear? It's a, it's, it's a park strategic plan, of which we have a draft, and it's, we're just starting the public engagement, and is one of the questions whether we incorporate a section of the draft park strategic plan that's called Green Necklace into the Central Issaquah Plan Visions. Is that the question?
Right. That is the question.
Oh, thank you. Do you have more?
No, I'm waiting for you guys.
Oh, you are.
Clarifying question. It's the 22 pages that would be incorporated where we before had one page with the one map.
Yeah. So, and I was just loading that to show you guys kind of what was in here in the draft of the visions. So, what we had was the map, and then about three paragraphs of summary of what the Green Necklace was. And, you know, so this is what we had, and there was a note that said, you know, more details are in the park strategic plan. And what we also talked about is, you know, once the park strategic plan gets approved, going back into Chapter 7 of the CIDS, which is Community Spaces, and really kind of put this map, or whatever you guys approve at the end of the day, into code, because that was to Paul's point from last meeting, I believe, which was, you know, hey, how does, is this on par with, say, the street plan that's in the CIDS, where it says, hey, we want streets to make, connect the grid? And here, you know, we, you can clearly see there's some trails that run through this area, but that'll be part of, I assume, the conversations you guys have, is is there the same level of clarity and getting to that predictability that I think you were asking for last time? And I don't know, Council Member Winterstein, if you've looked at this enough, these 22 pages, to know if it, if it meets your bar, or if there's going to be a lot of conversation about that. It might help dictate what you want to do in terms of putting something in the visions when it's maybe still moving as part of its own process.
I'd like to make a comment about, about that, because I, so I have had an opportunity to, and I, to spend some time with this, and also even met with Parks Director Watling today. And, and I would say our exercise was as much as an attempt to reconcile developer obligations and this plan as it stood, as much as anything. And what I mean by that, there are many developer obligations that talk about trails, or access to open space, or something about the topic, which is the Green Necklace, without naming the Green Necklace. And, and, and so your question earlier about, I said they're both kind of complex. I do, I think they're very, very much intertwined, the developer obligations and the Green Necklace. And in fact, my, I, I, I think that the, this status, it's clearly an initial draft. And in fact, I can point out to some, one thing to you, which is, it's element, you don't have to go look this up, but Element 4B, for later reference, that needs, that is actually dealing with Mall Street. And we need, and actually, what's in the central area plan and the street grid and Mall Street, and what this says actually don't agree yet. So, they have to be reconciled. So, there's clearly work that needs to happen to, to address, you know, at least that one issue, that there may be more. So, that's a long way of saying that. This, I think there's a place, there absolutely, this Green Necklace, and, and one thing that Jeff said to me, and what I'm trying to say is, it was their intent that this component of the park strategic plan actually was part of the subarea plan for the central area. And because, and it has references back to the strategic plan. And even in this document that you have in front of us here, there is a section on, on page two, if this is, that even, they even identified areas of the CIDS that, that, in their process that they went through, if you scroll down to page two, you'll see in the second paragraph, they name area, in the first and second paragraph there, they name areas of the CIDS that through their process, they, they're recommending, and I'm saying they, those who created this document, actually get updated as a result of our body of work here. So, I see these, so I am in support of the idea that this section, when it's finalized, is part of the subarea plan. And I'm going to talk later on that, but there's a reconciliation process that needs to happen, because it does, in that one example, conflict with other parts of the subarea plan, the street grid, for example. And, and I also think that, and we're going to talk more about developer obligations, that the developer obligations, that reconciliation process that Jeff and I did today, probably can be, for those elements of the developer, can be replaced by references to this plan. So, there are places in developer obligations where we talk about trails and green places. Well, why don't we talk about Element 7, which I think is the Tibbetts area? Let's, let's reference that in, in this area. So, that's, that's the big picture, what I think about this. So, I, I think it should be, I don't, it still needs work to do, but I'm going to finish with saying that I don't think, however, that when it comes to the visions, that that work I just described, I think needs to happen, should hold up the adoption or completion of the visions.
So, I have a question. When, when, the question is whether to include this, are you talking about include this as part of developer obligations? Because that would be problematic, I believe, because it's not adopted.
Right. So, I don't, I don't think I'm suggesting that, no.
Or tell me specifically what you're suggesting.
I think at this point, the visions, so now that there is this document that is the Green Necklace, and this is way more information about the Green Necklace than ever we had before, and that's a great, that's a step in the right direction, right? I think that in the visions, there needs to be a couple paragraphs that talk about the Green Necklace and where you find the Green Necklace. But I would not include the Green Necklace or any part of this necessarily in the visions. That's what, if you were asking me what I would do.
So, is there possible, is it possible, and I think this is a question for legal, to reference the Green Necklace document and the fact that we have this process going on, and that, and I'm not going to use the right words here, but somehow, when, when there are obligations regarding parks, trails, open space, some sort of an acknowledgement that staff, in order to determine whether a developer had fulfilled some obligations, staff might look to the draft plan for ideas or.
So, this is, I think, this is an interesting piece, because even though, if you read the first, ah, if you read the first sentence, it says, "The elements of the Green Necklace are a combination of public properties, public streets, and private property." I find that not really true. I believe that this document is a public parks plan. They focused really on public parks, and I'll give you an example.
Did you, are you headed towards answering my question?
I think so. So, so if you take, like, where BMC is, which is right over here, there's nothing in this plan. There's nothing. And that's because it's, they, it's not part of the concept and the construct of this plan. So, the developer obligations, Council Member Goodman, I believe, are not covered by this plan yet. Now, maybe they should be. I don't know the answer to that. You guys will have to provide clarity on your opinions on that. But right now, I think the developer obligations that are related to open space and trails and amenities is a level of detail, within the developer obligations, is a level of detail that goes beyond this plan right now.
What I'm suggesting is, before this is adopted as policy.
Yes.
When you're talking about the level of detail that we don't have yet in the developer obligations, the question for legal would be, could we, and I think the answer is yes, you can try anything you want, could you make it explicit somewhere in here that those types of amenities that Parks, Recreation, Open Space, that do not have that level of detail, in order to determine whether the developer has met that obligation that the developer thinks might be vague, the city might look to this document that is still under construction? That, that's, I don't, that's not legally binding, but it's a middle ground. There are some expectations there. I don't think we need to insert 22 pages or whatever it is of a, and I should probably hold off making that comment before we hear from the public, but concern, I should say I'm concerned about just inserting a 22-page draft, you know, part of a draft document in here. First of all, it's ridiculously long to put into some sort of a, what we are expecting that we'll have code results. But I think there could be some sort of a middle ground there.
Okay.
That's just. Comment?
I think my comment would be similarly to, to both my fellow council members, that I see potential for, in, throughout the document, to make sure that the park strategic plan and the visions are, are in agreement, so that there isn't some part of the vision that's somehow in conflict with where the Green Necklace is envisioning pathways or those sorts of things. But I, I also agree, and I will, I will also listen to public comment, but on the face of it, I think that this is a long document, and it's organized into these sections by neighborhood, and then each neighborhood goes through all of the elements of the vision for that neighborhood, including the parks. And so, to, to then on top of it, add this layer of the parks plan, I think, I think it, I don't see that it works.
Keith, there, in the subarea plan today, there is a section for the Green Necklace.
Yes.
Why wouldn't this, in its completed form, be an update to that section?
I think we would want to do that.
After it's adopted?
Right.
After it's adopted?
Once this is complete, we update the subarea plan with this, and, and, and that's always what I thought we were going to do. I think what the, we're having, this has come up, I believe, because during the revisioning, I'll call it, the primacy of the Green Necklace and the lack of detail was daylighted, and, and, which is, which was good. I'm, and this is, like, I agree with you, it's moving in the right direction. I think the visions making references back to a Green Necklace section in the subarea plan is okay.
Okay. Yeah.
And then we're done with our questions. I'm going to, I think I'm going to call for public comment on this part of it, so that we can then come to an agreement about this, and then move on to the obligations.
And, that's fine.
Okay.
And I, later on, when we look at the developer obligations, I think we will be coming back to this, just.
Maybe, yeah.
I intend to.
Well, I'm not saying we can't.
Okay, that's.
I'm just saying, if you, if you're ready to, after we have public comment, I think referencing back to it is fine. If we can go ahead and make a, decide amongst ourselves on how we want to recommend regarding the Green Necklace, then we can move on to obligations. So, other questions for Keith? Public comment on the Green Necklace question before us? Honey?
So, the 22 pages are, totally agree with Keith, again, a stellar day, are public parks. They don't talk about how we're going to get our parks elements in our development. The visions are about how we are going to get, the whole context, but the developer obligations specifically are, how are we going to get the appropriate public parks through the developer obligations? And right now, the 22 pages in language conflict dramatically with what is in the Central Issaquah Plan language. They are speaking Swahili, and they are speaking Mandarin. And I see chaos if we go any length of time without some sort of nomenclature binding. And I'm not sure how that will work, but I don't think it will work at all the way it is laid out now, because the language is so, so entirely different that I think it's unimplementable. That said, I think in the developer obligations, you have a place where you could be clear about what you expect from the developers in their public, public parks obligations on their own property, because we do have those within our code already. But they say things like adequate, or a baseline 20 by 20 square feet per building, which isn't very implementable, right? And so, we need better description for what we desire, and then that language could be turned into code very quickly, and I'm not sure how quickly it can be turned into code, and that is a question that I have, is, are we looking at three months, six months, a year, two years? Because that, that question, I think, will say how much work you need to do before you have to rewrite the language, because it's not going to work the way it is. So, I would leave the 22 pages out entirely, keep the parks components, and increase them in the general visions, and get a little more specific in the developer obligations. Then we do have city obligations, but I think you could just say, see the plan for the city obligations, right? Because, obviously. Now, I'm looking at you, and I'm hoping I wasn't speaking either Mandarin or Swahili, so nod if that was even comprehensible, if you don't mind. Yes? Okay. Thanks.
Even?
It was French.
It was Italian.
I mean, we're, we're getting close to get one plan done here, and we got another one that's in draft, that's had public comment, but no council work. So, I can't see that you can take something that's, council hasn't really worked yet, and incorporate it in a plan that's getting. and incorporate it in a plan that's getting resolved here, hopefully fairly soon. So if there has to be reference to Green Necklace, we need to make them work together. But there's a process to go through to do that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Vicky? Wants to go first?
I think that there was an effort on the part of the PBC to work with the parks, and there were joint meetings. And so the parks element has been, I think, brought in. I think it could definitely be strengthened, especially sort of teasing apart which elements are developer versus which elements are city, in terms of how do we implement within the Central Isekua, how do we actually implement the visions, including the Green Necklace, because that's a big important part of the vision. I don't think that separating it out in this way works with the other character or flow of the visions. And so I think that as we go, I would be in favor of, as we go through the visions, to look at the, what was pulled out as the Green Necklace element character for each area, and make sure that it's aligned, and make sure that it's reflected in terms of things that are developer obligations for a city, and also just that the vision and the elements of the Green Necklace that were pulled out by the Parks Department, and that they are in agreement, so that we don't have any conflict. But I think also that the wording, the wording can be similar to what's in the visions already. There's been a lot of wordsmithing and a lot of community input on the visions specifically, and a lot of really good work. And so I think, I think we just need to pull in those ideas without using the exact wording, which does come from a different document. And it is very clear, I think, that it comes from a different document.
I may end up asking some questions of you as well, just to make sure I understand So I said earlier what I was thinking, and that there is a landing place, there's an existing place in the subarea, central area, subarea plan. And by the way, just for point of reference, when I think about this whole body of work that we're doing, a lot moratorium work-related, we're updating a subarea plan. That's what a lot of this is. So this is a proposed update to the Green Necklace area of the subarea, section of the central subarea plan. And, the work that's been done to update the visions also identified, went beyond visions and said, "And here's some parks and trails and open space, specific, more specific items than was in the vision." Some of them are still pretty vague, honestly, and we're gonna talk about those. But I think the idea, I would like, hopefully where this lands, is that in the visions section, it makes a very strong reference and says, "We will be incorporating the implementation and the details as defined in the Green Necklace section of the subarea plan." I think that's all we need to do. And that's, I don't want to trivialize that. Because it does have to go through that reconciliation.
Right.
It's two different dialects of English in these two documents, not necessarily foreign languages. But the, there is, so that's what I meant when I said earlier, I think, I was agreeing earlier, that when I said reconciliation. It is about some of the details. It is about, it is about the writing itself. Technical writers can help you take care of that. I'm kind of restating what I said earlier, but that is, but I'm not sure, when I was listening to you, Vicky, if whether or not you were agreeing, or you had a different idea.
I think, I think I'm in agreement. I think that the visions need to align with the parks plan, but they don't, and they can reference the parks plan, which will live in the, this part of the, so this part of the park strategic plan will live in the subarea plan.
So right now, there's, so in the Central Isekua Development and Design Standards, Chapter 7, which is community space, 7.2 is called the Green Necklace. And there is an A section, subsection, and a B subsection. I would assume that this, all 22 pages replaces, and then, as Ms. Marsh said earlier, we're gonna need to reconcile verbiage and language, but that's where it would go. I think it would go and replace the vague description of the Green Necklace in Chapter 7.2, because this has much more clarity for us.
So I...
After it gets adopted. I mean, after the council adopts it, obviously.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't know that we need to make that decision tonight. I don't know that I agree that we add 22 pages to the visions.
No, 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 that's not what I said.
Okay.
In SIDS.
In SIDS?
SIDS. It would go to 7.2 of SIDS.
Is the 7.2 only the Green Necklace?
Yes.
So you would, 7.2 of the SIDS would have 22 pages of Green Necklace?
Yes.
So...
Maybe.
Yeah.
Sort of seems to me a different conversation.
Exactly. I think it's a different conversation as well. I agree with both of my colleagues. I think what Vicky has suggested is there could be some more clarity in the language of the developer obligations regarding the public spaces, that pulls in what we know already about the draft Green Necklace plan of the park strategic plan, and that Paul, I think, is talking about reconciliation, which, total agreement. And I mentioned, and I think somebody else mentioned, the reference to the draft portion of the park strategic plan relating to the Green Necklace as some sort of a guide for staff. They're all three a little bit different, obviously, but I agree with my colleagues.
Stacy, so your reference to the draft, I think, is additive. And I think, I think I know what you're, you're saying. Rather than just ignore the fact that this body of work exists, even though it's not in a complete and adopted state, that we could go forward, let's say the moratorium is lifted, and we go forward, you have something to reference.
Yes.
And, okay, so...
And making it clear, sorry, I'm sorry.
Finish your thought.
Making it clear to the developer that that's what you most, you would be referencing.
That they are draft. And I think it's very important. I know you said it sounded like it's a different conversation, but, and this is why I kept going back to the concept of, it's a subarea plan. We are updating a subarea plan. That's why we've had this process that we've had as well. And the CCIDs are an important part of that. It's interesting, in our code section online, they're not even there. They say, "Go see you guys, and see the central area plan." And there's a lot, by definition, those are regulations. Those are definitions of regulations. And so the idea that regulations that were developed as this joint effort of finishing the visions and the Green Necklace, then, okay, make their way into regulations into the CCIDs, that, to me, that's a natural outcome. So I think it's a very, and so if we can, I agree, I'm in support of Stacy's suggestion that it can be made clear that lets, that incorporate or reference somehow a draft version, but then, so that developers know that, but that we must take upon ourselves the work to complete it.
Okay. So we have to make a recommendation, and each of us had something slightly different. We have to make recommendations of the full council. Paul, I'll start with mine. So I would be asking my fellow committee members if we should recommend to the full council that the Green Necklace be referenced, as a source that we've talked about when determining developer obligations.
Okay. The clarity is on your, now you're talking about the developer obligations.
As, so...
The context.
Yes. In the developer obligations for development, so our developer obligations that talk about public spaces, public trails, open spaces, parks, that, we've heard comments that they're a little vague, they're not specific, they're not detailed. So then, how does a developer know, and how does staff know, when that obligation has been met? And my suggestion is that we, I will just ask, you know, we want to recommend to the full council, that, my suggestion, which is to specifically reference this preliminary document as a source for both staff and developers, for what might be used for determining whether the obligation has been met, even though it's a draft document, as a guide. Sure?
In addition to that, would you also, do you agree with Keith's suggestion that this is, the Green Necklace material in front of us in a future form is an update to the SIDS?
So that's, so the question is yes.
And the reason I ask, is I think in answering your question, I think knowing that would come, if that's coming along, would inform.
So my general answer would be yes. I just don't know the whether it needs to be the full 22 pages.
Yeah. No comment about, yeah, right, right. This is a draft.
Yeah.
A future version, appropriate for SIDS.
Do I think that we need, that the question needs to be asked later about whether that Green Necklace section of the park strategic plan replaces the subarea plan? Yes, I'm interested in that. I think it's a separate question for the future. But I don't disagree.
To your question, my point only is, if we want to make the kind of reference at your suggestion, I think knowing that a future form of this level of detail will be part of the subarea plan, is, I think is very important. That's all.
Well, and I think that presupposes what this final park strategic plan document looks like. So I can envision that answer being yes, but we're not through that process yet, so I don't want to condition...
Oh, you know what? So, okay, understood. In my meeting with Jeff today, he made it really clear, is their intent in the construction of this, is that this is something for the subarea plan, because it has many references out to the park strategic plan. So I believe that the authors and the architects of this document always intended this to be part of the subarea plan. So that's my frame of reference.
So with that in mind, as we move through the process for determining what that section looks like, we should keep that in mind as we finalize the strategic plan. So I think that's one question on the table, about whether we want to recommend to the full council what I described about referencing it.
I think throughout the different neighborhoods, under the developer obligations, there are places where it says things like, "Provide viewing platforms, educational opportunities, and measures to help promote the value of the natural environment." And then you see that language similarly throughout the neighborhoods. Similarly, there's language about wildlife corridors should be marked and clearly defined, and to have trails. And so there's sort of these elements throughout, but then, I think leaving the level of detail to the Green Necklace plan, which is provided by the parks, makes good sense to me, because there, there's much more technical detail about what that would actually mean, and those are the subject matter experts that know what a viewing platform would look like in that area. And in the Green Necklace, it goes into that kind of detail, and it talks about building materials, and it talks about the structure, the arrangement of buffers with regards to the roadways and those sorts of things. So I like the idea. I think we just need to be careful of where we need to make those references, but that seems like a good, I think that's a good way forward.
Do you agree, Paul?
Could you state, so what, state it again for me, please?
So what I wrote down, which might need some work. So what I wrote down was, to where there are developer obligations or city expectations, there would be either like some sort of footnote or connection that would say that, that would reference the draft and subsequent versions of the Green Necklace will be used to determine whether the obligations have been met. So you'll have this language that says, "We want you to do this," and it'll say, "And to figure out what that really means, go to this document, or its subsequent adopted form," and it will give you better clarity on how to get there.
Alternatively, it seems to me that it could be used, that if the developer, so the developer reads the obligation, they come up with a plan, and then it's viewed through that lens of the Green Necklace, and you could then use that Green Necklace to say whether or not that developer obligation is met. So rather, so the developer could use it, but it could also be a tool used by staff.
Staff.
And the commission. Okay.
I don't, I like that initial language. I would shoot it through legal to make it as strong as possible. So as a, so we would use it as a source, developers and the city would use it as a source, but then also as the standard when it's adopted. So we don't have to change anything when it's adopted initially.
Okay.
In that language, Keith, one thing you've said to me many times is, I want to be able to sit down with someone who has a proposal, who wants to develop something, and saying, "Hey, this is, this is what the city wants to do, and here's, here's what you have to do." That language suggests it's kind of used after the fact, but I just want to be perfectly clear that, but that still allows you to bring it in that checklist early on, when they're trying to figure out their project.
That would be my expectation, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. There's one recommendation.
Zing.
Okay. And Paul, we talked about this one already, that the final Green Necklace section in the strategic plan, that when it's adopted, to replace the current section of the CFP, we already talked about that. And that we need to reconcile the language between the strategic plan and the visions. We're not gonna solve that tonight.
Right.
Okay. And then, Vicky, yours seems to be, I think we're starting to answer the question of where this fits in right now. Vicky had talked about teasing out more in the language of the developer obligations. I think that's slightly different than what to do with the Green Necklace section. Or did you have a specific recommendation related to what you were talking about earlier that we might consider regarding the Green Necklace?
I think, I think it's, my recommendation would be to use, to use references to the Green Necklace document, which will be, it's a separate document, to strengthen the wording regarding developer obligations that have to do with the Green Necklace, of which there are, there are many, I think.
And do you think we did that already, Vicky, with, with kind of the way, if that language that we had kind of posed earlier, which provides you that connection between the Green Necklace document that ultimately gets there?
Well, I think that as we go through the developer obligations, we can, so we're gonna do that as its own section. And so I think, as we go through the developer obligations, there are some that are very linked with the Green Necklace, and there are some that are distinct from the Green Necklace. And so I think for those ones that are linked with the Green Necklace, we need to make sure that they're in agreement in, at a high level, and then also that, my recommendation is to refer to the Green Necklace document for specifics. I think it's in agreement with what we've been talking about.
Okay. So I heard you a little differently earlier, I just want to make sure. So if you want to make a separate recommendation, as we're talking about the Green Necklace topic, you're welcome to do that. What I understood you were saying was that perhaps when we get to the developer obligations, and for specific obligations that are about the Green Necklace, elements of the Green Necklace, that we might change the wording by pulling words from the Green Necklace, draft Green Necklace document. Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Because I think that, my feeling on that is that it, there's a lot, there's 22 pages of the Green Necklace document. In some areas, it's very clear that they're geographically specific, but in some cases, the neighborhoods are, the wording is vague, and it's more specific. So just to make it clear, when developers are looking to that document, what specifically, what part of the document they want. what part of the document they want to actually be linking up with that.
Okay, so that exercise is part of the developer obligations exercise we're going to do. That was my understanding. That was, and, and I'm agreeing, I am in agreement that that is a good exercise to go through when we get there. But do we have any more recommendations under the topic of green necklace and what to do with it right now?
I have one more. I, I think that the original, it's not, it's not the original, but in the last version of the visions, there was the couple paragraphs on the green necklace and I think, and the, and the map, which refers to the park strategic plan. And I think that that gives a good overview of the green necklace for developers looking at the visions. They, they can see a one page with the visual. So I am a proponent of keeping that in, and I think it is, I think it's a really good summary, and I, I do think that the wording was very careful in that section and describes the green necklace succinctly and well.
Which one?
The, it's, no, it's actually in the visions.
Oh, okay, in the visions, sorry. Yeah.
This one here. So this is, this I think is good to include because I think if you're a developer and you're new to Isiqua or you're not familiar with the wording of what is the green necklace, you can just look at this in the visions and it gives a quick overview and a quick visual of what we're, what we are talking about with that map. And the map is in agreement with the park strategic plan, so I'm in favor of keeping that.
Fine with that.
Couple things, the, Keith, you mentioned the section by number and sub number of the SIDS, but in the, at the sub area plan level outside the SIDS, there is a section for the green necklace.
Yes, in the central Isiqua plan, there's a green necklace.
Yes, there is. I don't know, I, I.
But it, it just has some text, right?
Well, there, it's, it's, yes, there is, there are some pages, and I'm sorry, I should probably have some more detail on that. I guess the reason I bring that up is, is, and I don't think even in this proposed, the bill, in the form of it is today, and the updates of the, of the sub area plan are suggesting taking that out or replacing that. I get my, my, I've just been assuming, and this is what I was, and I was assuming this earlier this evening as I was speaking, is that this would, you just said in the visions, but I think there's a place already in the sub area. So I, I don't think, do developers only look at visions? Well, no, right? Or am I, or am I wrong? I mean, I would think you've got, it's a sub area plan, they've got the whole thing to consume. So it just should be in its logical place, and, and we already have a place for it. That's all that I'm saying. And I think then you added in that it's also, by the way, there's more detail in the SIDS.
Right.
So would you be open, so I kind of want to move on unless we have other big issues. And so I, what I was going to suggest is perhaps, maybe you have an idea, each of you might have an idea about where an appropriate place is, and maybe that's something we could do offline and shoot Keith an idea, suggestion.
Okay. Well, I do, so I do have one other comment then, and, and because I think, I don't, I don't think I'm in agreement with what I understood you said earlier and that, and be, I would prefer, when I was using the word reconciliation earlier, there are developer obligations, I think, that should probably drive changes to this draft right here. So rather than, yeah, I've got some words in a developer obligation, and then I have the details of my green necklace, I want one area where all this is described. And, and so to me reconciliation goes both ways, and not only reconciliation on the language, but also the, the, the body of work that resulted in these developer obligations, I think has an, should probably inform and may drive some updates in future drafts of the green necklace. And I don't think they're extensive, or, or there are many of them, honestly. And so that was just, so, because I'm envisioning in the vision section where you say, hey, everything that's related to, you know, parks, open space, whatever, however, would there be some plug in there that says, and, and even by neighborhood, and it can be in each of the neighborhood sections, it can be in the neighborhood section to see these, see these parts of the green necklace for your obligations on trails, parks, and open space. And then in this neighborhood, see these portions of the green necklace for your obligations on, on, again, for parks, trails, and open space, rather than having some language there and then some other language in another section of the document. So I, so it gets to the, my, my point is, is I think when we get to the developer obligations, we'll get to talk about some of those. I'm, I'm thinking they push the other way.
So I think we need to get to the developer obligations and talk about that, unless there are any other, we have two recommendations. One is about the map, to go in its logical place, and if you two have suggestions about where that is, then you're going to send that to Keith. And the other one is, we already talked about it numerous times, is about referencing the draft section of park strategic plan. Okay? Are you good? Now, for the longer discussions.
So you want me to give you a couple, a little bit of an intro to this before we start?
Sure, and then I'm going to have some thoughts too. Go ahead.
Okay. So, so what I did was, there were some, there were some comments at the last committee meeting about some of these, the language in some of these seem vague, some of them were trying to get to the same thing but were worded a little bit differently. And so what I tried to do is to go through them and reconcile some of the language so that they read the same in each neighborhood, because I think they're intended to read the same. I don't think, you know, that there should be spoken differently if they're intended to get to the same outcome. And the other thing I did was, I looked at some of them, and if they seem, if they were either duplicative to other developer obligations, I cited that, and those potentially got deleted or suggested for deletion. And some of them were just too vague to really understand what we were after. And, and then some were actually already covered by SIDS or the architectural manual or Newport corridor plan, or, I mean, there's a lot of things that you guys have done in the last year that has kind of rendered some of these maybe a little obsolete. So, so that's what this first worksheet was, was really kind of going through my thought process on all of those, which then kind of landed us at a outcome. And then there's the two code. There's actually a second code piece, and this was suggested by Connie, and I agree with it. It talks about conflict of provisions and, and to add visions in here that gives the director the ability to interpret if there's a conflict that, that arises. So I don't know if you want to just go through what's left, or if you want to go back up to the worksheet, either way.
So, um, so we have a, potentially a huge body of work and discussion in front of us, and we're sensitive to both how long it could take tonight, but also sensitive to the moratorium and seeing what we can do to move toward potentially lifting that other than extending it. I think that would be a, a good thing if we're ready for it. So I'm wondering if we want to start with the document where you deleted, you took some out, and ask if we want to, if we have disagreements with what was taken out. So if there are things that you think should be left in, or in my case, I'm going to ask if something should be taken out and limit that discussion to what you, what you think, what you don't agree with that Keith did in terms of elimination, or maybe you want to do an, an additional elimination. I'm also going to suggest that we try to prioritize ourselves somewhat in, I mean, we, if we spend as much time on this and each one of these, or even a few of them that we did on the green necklace, we won't finish tonight at all. I would like to finish, but I also want to make sure that we give sufficient time, the time that we need to, to talk about it. Not trying to cut it short, but to the extent that we can be mindful of that, it would be, it would be great. And then after we're done with the deletions worksheet, then we could move on to the remain, the ones that remain, which is the shorter worksheet for tonight. That was my thought. So I'll start on the, you had deleted, I'm sorry, go down to 2.3, please.
Of West Newport? Or which one?
I'm sorry, Pickering.
Pickering.
This may.
2.3, yes.
I didn't look for it for anywhere else, but it says, it talks about providing or encouraging smaller sized residential units geared to individuals and small families. But if you look up on the same one, 1.2, it talks about a variety of housing choices including size, tenure. So I think those should be combined.
Okay.
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 Provide for transit, pedestrian, and bicycle circulation to all adjacent properties. And you said adjacent, the word adjacent is vague. So if the issue is that the word adjacent is vague, we can define that better. If the issue is that it's not appropriate for that to be a developer obligation, then that's a different question.
I think maybe what bothered me, and I don't think adjacent is vague, so sorry about that. I think what bothered me was, was the word all. I mean, I think generally speaking, I believe that we should be interconnecting our parcels for non-motorized mobility. There could be situations where that doesn't make sense. Maybe there's, maybe an adjacent parcel, you have to cross some critical areas, or there's a steep slope in the way that that doesn't make sense. And so I guess, I guess what bothered me was this was all inclusive, and there, it, there wanted to be some ability for good judgment there.
Okay, so then I would like to keep that in, if you want to clean up the language for.
Okay.
For what you felt the problem was, which was all. And it can be something as necessary or appropriate, or I don't know, something, what do you guys think? Or maybe.
Okay.
That huge of an issue, but I think taking out any, anything that requires providing, you know, interconnectedness is just not right.
Okay.
Well, so I do want to comment.
Mm-hmm.
If I look at your body of work in total, where you took your pass at this, and I, actually, I really appreciate you doing that work. I know I received it on midday on a Sunday. So I appreciate the time that you put into that, and I think it's something that you and I discussed. I, the idea that, I'm going back and I'll say, I'll use that word again, it's my word of the night. You reconciled with some of the existing SIDS, which was fantastic. So, you know, this is, we actually have this covered. I really appreciate, numerous places you, you identified the Newport Way Concept Corridor Plan. You know, actually, we, we have that covered there. So I appreciate that, that's, that's, that's important. And, and why I bring that up now is this particular one that Stacy just mentioned, and Stacy, tell me again the number, see, this was, it was Pickering Connected 3.2.
Right.
And everywhere where it says something like, provide transit, pedestrian, and bicycle circulation, when we start talking about mobility, circulation, I think about Transportation Improvement Plan, including the non-motorized elements that we have, and I think about the, the green necklace, which goes beyond the TIP. And, and, you know, my desire for every one of these green, every one of these developer obligations, which is about mobility like that, what we should be thinking about, or did it get reconciled to the TIP, or should it drive a change to a TIP if it's not already there? Or should it drive a change or a clarification in the green necklace? I, I think every, you know, to me, that's a very, we talk about who's going to read this and whether they're going to figure things out or not. I think, you know, if instead we had references to, you know, the TIP, and maybe specific projects, or maybe you don't want to do that in a sub area plan, but we know, I think in our TIP, what areas those projects identify, and we, we're going to know, and I think we're going to go in a direction where the green necklace identifies things by neighborhoods as well. So I'm picking on this one because Stacy had brought it up, you had mentioned candidate for delete, but I looked at, again, I look at comments like when you talk about transit corridors or pedestrian corridors or bicycle circulation, we have mechanisms to deal with those. And we should make sure that those tools reflect what we want in the central area. In this case, I think these are going to do, because there's trails, there's the green necklace, and because there's other motorized circulation elements, it's the TIP.
So are you in agreement that it should be added back in, or? Can you tell? Sorry.
I, I think all, any, I, I think any developer obligation that deals with those aspects of mobility and circulation should be replaced with references to our TIP or the green necklace. And if they're not in there and we think they should, then we, that's what we have to do. We have to go update our TIP. If that's, if that's what we want to do.
Okay, so.
Well, so, okay, let's just stay there for a second because I think philosophically it's a big point. So, so this is, you know, what we're talking about is, and I'm going to take issue with TIP because TIPs are obligations, right? And these are developer, we're telling developer what you got to do. And so I think these are different than that. I think they are at a finer grain. The problem, you know, the problem, I think what we're trying to do is shore up some holes. And, you know, so could you put that particular statement, is, I guess, is that, is that a neighborhood specific defining element? Or should that be consistent in all of central Isiqua? Well, if it, if it is something that should be consistent in all of central Isiqua, then maybe it needs to go into the SIDS somewhere as it's stated here. That may be the right choice for that. I don't know, again, I'm, I'm a little hesitant to throw everything into the green necklace bucket because we're going to have to remember all those things that we threw in so that when you guys do your review of the park plan and the green necklace as a subcomponent of that, that you remember all those things that need to get populated in. So those are my comments.
Appreciate the comment about the, the SIDS because that's in, to me, that's in the same spirit of, of, directionally, philosophically, where I landed, is that, is, is, in, in fact, I think, you know, visions are one thing to the, and you go through a visioning process, which the community did, and you facilitated all of that. The, and it's totally, I totally understand where as, through that process, you say, you know what, and I, and if we achieve this vision, I think we should, these things should happen on the ground. And, and, and that's fine, that's what we have, we have a lot of these developer obligations. I think those go beyond the concept of a vision update, and, and, and we should be finding places for, whether they be in the SIDS, whether they be in the Newport Way Corridor Plan, whether it be in, and maybe not the TIP because you said that's all public domain, or our obligation, city obligations. But there's some other landing places we have as well. And that, that, those, that makes a lot of sense to me because those are the, those are existing controlling documents that we are, rather than turning the visions into a, into that. than turning the visions into a, into that level of detail. Let's go back to the C, the SIDS and make sure that those are updated. Let's go back to the Green Necklace Plan and make sure that that reflects what we want to do. I think those, so I, so I appreciate you mentioning the SIDS. I said TIP and Green Necklace, so maybe it's SIDS, but yes, something like that.
Okay, so, sounds like add that, this back in, and, and note that we have more work to do. What you're saying, separately?
Yes.
Yes.
Separately.
Okay, so do we, are there any other, what else do we have on this, the worksheet of deletions?
Well, so I, I agree that I think we should talk more about the pedestrian and bicycle access rather than delete it. I, I also noted a few where it says that it's covered by other documents and standards, and I just want to clarify that. So Confluence 2.3, co-mingle low to moderate density residences and businesses in the Architecture and Urban Design Manual.
So, right now, the Architecture and Urban Design Manual for Confluence allows, is it six different architect types, Mel? There's six choices outside the core? So, so there's six choices of architecture that you can pick. You know, the, one of the things that we had talked about as a city implementing action for Confluence was to bring forward the potential downzone, back to what it was before it was included into Central. So, you know, I think, my sense is, I just feel like we have this covered already through the Architecture and Urban Design Manual, and as well as the code change that we had already identified as part of this neighborhood.
The code change, has that occurred?
No, it would be after adoption. It would be one of the city actions after we adopt the visions. It's waiting for that.
Okay. Okay, so the code change would encourage this co-mingling of low to moderate density residences?
Well, it would kind of cap it at low to moderate density, and, you know, the co-mingling piece, you know, okay, that one's hard to implement. If, you know, unless you're going to make it mandatory that you have to be different than your neighbor. And it seems like we, I don't know that we want to go there.
Okay. I have one under Pickering, 2.4.
Okay.
Which is vertical mixed-use development, and then covered by VMU Code, Council didn't include Pickering.
Right. So...
This does seem perhaps contrary to the vision that is identified in the document for Pickering. So it seems like more than just maybe a deletion, but also a potential conflict in the document.
Are we encouraging mixed use in Pickering? And if we are, then, are we envisioning mixed use?
We're, well, okay. Okay, let's start with the reason why I deleted it. You know, because as 2.4 was written for Pickering, that seems like that's an obligation, and, and is very clearly written obligation. And, you know, when Council adopted the VMU Code, it was for a portion of Gilman, not Pickering. Now, by deleting 2.4, it, it doesn't preclude vertical mixed use, and it doesn't even preclude us asking a developer if they would do something. There's still the piece in here, which I'm sure we'll talk about at some point, because I know the Council member, Winterstein, doesn't like it, the no net loss of jobs or square footage. So if you're going to put apartments or residential into Pickering or Gilman or Eastlake, and, and you're going to take out something that exists now that's probably retail, you're going to have to provide some mixed use. It's just going to work that way if, if that other piece stays. But that's a conversation we haven't had yet.
Okay. And what else with the worksheet, the deletions worksheet? Anything else? Are we, are you ready to move on? You know, something else?
Well, I wanted to follow up real quickly, that, I saw your comment, this vertical mixed use, Pickering, and I, I agree with that. We, we were very deliberate, and where we said we're going to require, and these are obligations are intended to require.
Yes.
So I saw that as a conflict, and I thought this was a correct correction. But it doesn't dissuade, we, we want to be mixed use anywhere.
Right.
So...
Except for Confluence.
Well, in the areas where it's zoned that way.
Right.
We have, the zoning is already there.
Right.
So, I agree with that.
Okay. Ready?
I have no other changes.
Okay. So we're moving on to what the remaining developer obligations are. And I was thinking that we would just take this the way we do budget items and, and start at the top, which is West Newport, and we'll go, we'll start with 1.1, and if you don't, if you have comments, great. You don't have an issue with it, then maybe we don't have to talk about it. So does anybody have an issue with 1.1?
Yes, I'm going to keep, okay, your proposed language is provide, provide private amenities, and then parenthetically, parks, trails, outdoor seating, et cetera, that create social opportunities and connect people with onsite or adjacent open spaces. So, is this intended, is this on public property, or is it private?
Private.
It says provide, provide private amenities that connect people with onsite or adjacent open space areas. So we're saying like onsite, so is this, is there nothing, or do we not address any of that in the SIDS already?
So the SIDS has a square footage requirement per unit.
Yeah.
That could be balconies, right? So if you, if you decided to do all your square footage by balcony, then there is a, and Connie mentioned it earlier, there's a 400 square foot per building obligation. So if you had one, if it was a one big mixed use building, there'd be one 400 square foot space. So what this is talking about is, this is, this is trying to get to, there's actually two pieces. I blended two different ones. So you can't skip the create social opportunities, because that's equally as important and actually distinct from, potentially, possibly distinct from connecting people with onsite and adjacent open spaces. So we want social opportunities, and if there happens to be open space onsite or adjacent to, we want to give people to the greenness of Issaquah. And so I think that this is not covered. I looked through the community spaces section, I don't think it's in there now. I think it's important, especially for, you know, West Newport is very much a more, has more connection to green and open spaces than some of the other neighborhoods. So I don't, I mean, so that's the reason why it's here. You know, could you take it out and put it in, you know, Chapter 7, maybe? But it's, it's here right now. I think it's important to not cover it elsewhere, which were my lenses.
Okay, okay, thank you for that. I, I feel we identified areas, the SIDS updates we should be talking about. This is one of them.
I would agree with you. This seems like a stop, these seems like, some of them seem like stopgaps. You know, we could put them, we could require them elsewhere in SIDS. I agree with the, what I understand, or my interpretation of the intent of this is, if you're anticipating a dense area, you don't want the experience, the outdoor experience that people have is all in balconies. You know, or big recreation rooms inside, or some little tiny patch of grass. I think we're trying to create a cool place, and I think that the intent of this gets at the view of residents downtown in that area.
I have a question about the word private. So provide private amenities, just because a lot of times, you know, outdoor seating, if it's, if it's not on a balcony, if it's not in an enclosed space, it could also be a public area, or it could be kind of a public area that really the residents only know about, that I think happens a lot. And so I guess my, my just, my wonder if, if by providing private amenities gets at that same experience as it would be if it were open access amenities?
So, so the intent is, it's privately provided, paid for and maintained. You know, whether it has a public face to it or not is probably going to depend on the development and the developer. You know, a lot of developers don't particularly like to encourage people onto their property. But if you don't provide them within the private spaces, then their only option is to come out and use whatever public spaces there are. And so this is also trying to get at not overwhelming what public amenities we do have, or that are provided in the vicinity, by having some private spaces, you know, that are used. There's, there's a number of private spaces around the Costco campus, I'll use that as an example. They're privately funded, they're privately maintained. You can walk through there if you wanted to, if you felt comfortable with that. You know, if, if, if the council member would like some tweakage on this to make it seem more publicly facing or open to the public, we could do that.
What if you struck the word private and added provide amenities, parenthetical, that creates social opportunities and connect people, maybe people, I'll just leave people for now, with onsite or adjacent open space areas for residents of that development? Or aimed at providing, or something that, so the goal, so the focus here is not everybody else in Issaquah, the focus here is on the quality of life for those people living in tight spaces. That's the way I view this. I'm wondering if you could, if that helps.
Right, I think that there, in, in Seattle, for example, there's a lot of privately owned public spaces, and they're clearly marked as such, and they're probably mostly used by the people that are in those buildings, or that work in those buildings and use that plaza. But at the same time, it is, so I, I guess, I just think if we're wordsmithing, that the word, to say that we're, you're providing private amenities, it seems to me that it could be private or privately owned public use amenities would also meet this need, and is also a way that developers could meet this need. So I, I'm, I'm fine with, with that wording that you suggested, or, or with just striking private, the word, say, provide amenities.
So I think the word private was intended to be onsite. So you can provide, provide, provide private and/or public amenities onsite, blah, blah, blah. That's, by onsite, I'm trying to capture what you said, for the people who live there.
I don't think it captures that, because I don't think, I don't, I understand what you're saying, onsite. I think what it doesn't capture in the, is the intent that this is trying to, it's aimed at being a benefit for the people who live in those spaces. That's, yeah, that's all I'm saying.
Understood.
Okay, are we done with number one? 1.2, I, I don't understand why it switched from provide to encourage.
Well, so...
Because it's not an obligation.
Yeah.
So we either provide it, or we take it out. I mean, it's, to me, it's just, it's black and white. Because we are here because we only encouraged. And we got ourselves in what I will term is not a very fun spot.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What have we already done, not on the table tonight? Do you think that will, will, will prevent, to get us more of what we want in, in this topic of a variety of housing choices?
So I want to ask Keith, I mean, why did, what have, what's changed? Why does he think this only needs to be encouraged? Because I don't want to sit here and go through everything that we've done to test my memory about whether this is appropriate.
I was just trying to see if we had the same kind of understanding. So I, so inclusionary zoning, which hasn't been adopted, I think was maybe some of the reasons you cited earlier, or am I getting my, my...
That's aimed at affordable, this isn't necessarily just affordable, though.
This one's not...
So, so what is it aimed at?
So this is...
What does that mean, variety of housing?
So, so one of the things that, that I think Planning Commission heard through the housing strategies was, we want, we want a variety of housing in our community. We want a variety of housing. Diversity of housing choices makes it possible for more people to choose to live in town. Okay? So, so that came up, I think, throughout the conversations about the neighborhoods. And so you'll see it, it populates pretty much every neighborhood, and so how we deal with it here will inform how we deal with it in the other neighborhoods. It changed from provide to encourage. So, so provide, you know, it was, I think, at, I, my sense was there was some pushback from the committee on that particular one, last committee meeting, which you weren't at. And, you know, it was, maybe at least two to one, if not maybe three, were giving me direction that, that provide a variety of housing was too strong. So staff responded that way, and maybe if we misunderstood, or if I misunderstood, this could clearly go back to provide.
Maybe I was napping during that session.
You were not here, actually.
I watched it.
You were...
So I clearly, I missed it if it was a discussion.
Well, the, so the other part of the wording on that that changed was the, the addition of the specifications of size and tenure.
Size and tenure.
What was meant by housing choices. And part of my, part of my issue with the previous wording on that was just that I didn't know what a variety of housing choices meant, and if every developer has to provide a variety, or if in aggregate developers are together providing a variety, because that's, that's was unclear to me. So the, and the word tenure, does that refer to ownership?
Yeah.
Okay, so ownership and rental. Okay. So would a developer, so this would, if we wrote provide, then if every developer is going to have to, every developer is going to have to provide a variety of tenure, which is two things, so that means they would have to provide both rental and ownership?
So, so the way I would interpret this is, you know, if it was provide, so provide a variety of housing choices, now size, tenure, et cetera, is what we meant by variety. So if they chose to provide a mix of three bedrooms and studios, that's a variety of housing. I think they meet the bar. But someone, you know, like Riva, who's probably, all their townhouses are probably the same size, that would not.
So townhouses that are some rental and some ownership would also meet the bar?
They would.
In your estimate? Okay, I think... What is the et cetera? I mean, it still seems a little bit, if I try to think from the perspective of a, a developer and all the situations the developer could be in, it still seems potentially difficult.
I could change it to size or tenure and lose the et cetera.
But you, you also have that other language that we merged, or that we talked about merging? Size, tenure, variety of...
Including affordable housing.
Single, you know, individuals, that, I think you can include all... Single, you know, individuals, that, I think you can include all of those. So, here's my thought. If we put provide in here, we're going to hear about it pretty quickly from developers. Okay? If we put encourage in here, and we have no teeth at all, because courage is no, has no teeth at all, then we've lost an opportunity. So I would rather start off strong than weak. So I would be in favor of putting provide back in. Totally understand the vagueness of it, totally get that.
Also, jumping ahead, I don't actually want to jump ahead, but I'll just say that Pickering 1.1 has the same sentence, but plus affordable housing, and this one doesn't, but it has et cetera, which I guess could be affordability levels.
It could.
I mean, you could strike et cetera, and then it can't be, but...
So the reason why affordable housing isn't in West Newport is because the inclusionary doesn't include West Newport, but it does Pickering, Gilman and Eastlake. So, so what I heard from Stacy is, so size, tenure, we listed some other specific examples of diversity of housing in our housing strategy. Rather than have et cetera, which I agree is vague, we could populate that perenn bracket with those other examples that is what we mean by housing choices.
Right, I think it's important, because I think that what's in the parentheses is what people are going to actually look at to meet this obligation, which would decide a lot about how their building is.
Right, I agree.
Agreed.
Okay.
Encourage or provide?
I agree with Councilmember Goodman in terms of encourage or provide, because I think the visions, provide, in the, in the body document, of the document, there's wording about the vision, and it's forward looking, and it doesn't prescribe necessarily how to get there. But in the developer obligations, I think we need to be specific that they're obligations, and the concept of an obligation and an encouragement seem to me to be at odds.
If you, if you agree, we can move on, Paul?
Well, we can move on, but I'm, I'm still where I was last time. I think, I think that, and this, this is a tough one for me, because I, I see, I just, I see nothing but problems, but I can't articulate it more than that.
Sure.
I think the idea, there, there is, we have our thumb on a lot of stuff. We've got a big pile of regulations now. Architecture and urban design did a lot of that as well. We've got, there's, there's so much in here, we're going to get what we've already adopted, not what's still on the table, inclusionary zoning and all of this, are going to have a major impact of what's going to evolve in the central area. And my, this, this idea of getting into this variety and putting our thumb on that part of the scale, I'm not comfortable with. I think, I think there are...
Okay.
I'd rather leave it encourage.
2.1, thank you. 2.1, does anybody disagree with support Mountains to Sound Trail and Cougar Mountain Trailhead with pedestrian and bicycle connections and wayfinding signage?
Hold on, hold on, where are I...
2.1. Under...
West Newport.
West Newport.
I'm sorry, I have a different, why am I not, I'm sorry, let me, I gotta reconcile what I've got here. I'm not seeing that. For some reason I have that as 2.2.
2.1, not on this one. This one.
Oh, that's, okay, support mountains, okay. I see, I see, I do have a version of that.
I'm okay with this one. I think probably this will be one that some developers have to explain why this doesn't apply, because they, it doesn't, they're not near the trailhead, and so it doesn't make sense to provide a bicycle connection potentially, if that doesn't make sense. It is very specific to a location, but is, if we're going with the overall idea that this can be a checklist, and then if you can't do, can't meet the obligation, you just explain why, I think I'm, I'm fine with that. I think that those developers that are near the Mountains to Sound and Cougar Mountain Trailhead to provide connections is a benefit.
I did hear that, those comments at the last meeting, is there a way to, or maybe, I don't have it in front of me, so I don't know, and I don't recall seeing it, is there, and I think the point is well made, is that possible to reference in the document that not all obligations would have be applicable to every property, it depends on location and...
So I add it as applicable...
Sorry.
In the code.
Okay. I'm sorry.
That was, that came up, that did come up last committee meeting.
Yeah, so what does support mean? So support with, so you're saying provide pedestrian and bicycle connections to the Mountains to Sound Trail and Cougar Mountain Trailhead?
Yes. And, and wayfinding signage.
So support means provide?
Yes.
Kind of using.
So support now says provide?
Well, that's, that was a question, if that was the intent. And in, so, I want to hear Keith...
Yes.
If any, any dwelling unit is going to have that in this neighborhood, we all know, are going to connect to Newport Way, where the, the Mountains to Sound Trail already is, it's there now. What is, what is, what, in addition to whatever connection they have to Newport Way, what is this beyond just a connection that they have with Newport Way, including for pedestrians and bicycles?
So, so what this does for me is, so let's take, you know, this is an interesting neighborhood, because we know most of what's going on there, right? We don't know what's going on yet on the VET property, so that's a great one to talk about, because it's most likely going to be residential. Okay, so, and we know that that property sits low, kind of like Senior does to Newport. And so as they, as they start to design their project, you know, what this does is say, all right, you know, our expectation is that you're going to facilitate bicycles out to the Greenway Trail, and whether that happens through your street connection to Newport, or whether that's a separate, you know, multi-use facility that intersects with the Mountains to Sound Trail, you know, there's different ways you can get there, but this tells me that you've got to make sure that bicycles can easily get to that trail, because that's an important piece of this neighborhood.
Okay, so you said or, you've got a connection to Newport Way, or some other way. I, I, that just seems superfluous to me. They're, they're going to have to get to the roadway, they have to get to the roadway, have to.
But there's a difference...
They want ingress and egress off their property, they have to have a driveway, they have to have, they're going to connect to Newport Way.
Right, right. They're going to have a vehicular connection to Newport Way.
That, but a vehicular connection is not necessarily a...
Bike friendly one.
Pedestrian oriented connection.
So we don't, there's nothing about pedestrian circulation anywhere? We don't address this anywhere in terms of elsewhere, anywhere in the subarea plan, or is it within our code about pedestrian inside a development? Get from the development to get to the public right away?
In my opinion, this language is stronger.
Well, it's stronger than...
What's in the SIDS.
What section, do you know?
I don't have it in front of me.
So there, so we have something in the SIDS that attempts to do the same thing? In general? I'd be in favor of strengthening the SIDS across the board. This happens to mention the Mountains to Sound Trail, and, and, and we haven't talked about the Cougar Mountain Trail, that's a very specific location, the trail is a linear thing.
So here's how the SIDS reads.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Non-motorized facility, Section 12.4. Non-motorized routes should be designed to serve walkers, joggers and cyclists. And, and I guess, so there's a difference between how that reads, right, and how this reads. And our job wasn't to go back and fix the SIDS, that's a huge undertaking, this is huge.
Filling gaps.
I don't disagree.
Well, my contention is, is that in this process of coming up with these developer obligations, you identified areas in many cases, not in all cases, but in many cases, areas where, hey, the community thinks this part of the SIDS should be updated.
But I think this is, so this is a finer grain of detail. This is saying, in this neighborhood, the Mountains to Sound Trail and the Cougar Mountain Trailhead are really important facilities and destinations.
Agreed, completely, agreed.
So, so it's, it's providing even more clarity about, in this neighborhood, we need to make that a priority.
Where it's applicable.
Where it's applicable, right. I think, I think this one won't cause people too much heartburn, I think it's a good thing to have. I think the wayfinding signs are actually the nugget in this one.
Well, wayfinding in particular, I didn't mention that. There needs to be, we need a citywide wayfinding plan, and, and what I wouldn't want to see is a bunch of one-offs, right? Go back, you think about that Green Necklace, and that map that shows the central area, it shows all the other areas of Issaquah, then it shows the regional pieces outside of Issaquah that we're connecting with. You know, wayfinding covers that territory, that, all of Issaquah, in my mind. So that, that is, that's a side conversation outside, because it's mentioned in a number of places in these obligations. And, and I know we've discussed this before, I can tell you in particular, you know, from a, from an LTAC perspective, like, very interested in trying to hold on to, you know, revenues that we already have, reserves, and then forecasting what might come in, so that we can really kickstart and get this wayfinding piece citywide off the, off the, off the ground. So that's a, this to me would end up in a bunch of one-offs for wayfinding. It would be great if we had a wayfinding plan, we had a design and what, and a style, and, and, and something more than just general wayfinding, which I think, you know, if we just have, every developer gets to figure out for themselves what it is, what it looks like, how complete it is. I'd rather we had a citywide wayfinding plan.
Okay, so, do you want to, are we moving on? What, what are we going to do? I, I don't, I don't support taking it out, I don't disagree with some of your points, Paul, but I...
So I, I wish that, I think it was 12.4, it's, boy, that just, if, if with, if there's a simple way to make 12.4 stronger, like this is stronger, why don't we just do that? Then we've taken care of everything.
Are you...
Any location, he mentioned 12.4 of the SIDS.
Are you keeping a list of the things that we need to change in SIDS?
Yes.
Okay.
Mine.
So my uncomfortableness is the time it takes to change SIDS and the gap between taking something like this, anything out, because, you know, the very first application that came in after the Central Issaquah Plan was adopted was, did not fit within the vision, but we allowed it. So, do I think we're going to get a lot of, hear a lot about many of these? Yeah. I totally agree with you about, I totally agree with you that it's not, you know, still not perfect, but I would rather have more than less in here, but, do I think we change should to shall anytime soon? No. So, can we move on to the next one? Take advantage of grade changes to provide public vistas of natural areas.
Can you explain this one? I, I mean, I, this one has been in there for a while. It's, this is, this is one that I think is vague, take advantage of, is vague to me.
So, so what this is saying is, so I did unpack this a little bit, it's a little bit better than it was. We can go back and look at the last language if you don't think I'm telling the truth.
You added the word public.
I did. So, so part of this is, you know, there are properties that have topography associated with them, right? And, you know, as you move down the slope, you know, and you choose to provide your kind of vista points, that's what this is saying, is think about those changes and the views out. And the reason I put public vistas, because, okay, that means for the people, you know, you want, not just, you want the views coming out your window to be in the nice spots, but you also want to take advantage of maybe where the roads change, maybe where there's a little gathering space, to create those spaces where people want to go. So I, this says actually a lot to me.
That's a good question. Are you talking about creating public spaces and the public can view, or are you talking about building in such a manner that you can, the public can still see the mountain through the multiple buildings?
I think those were the same, but maybe not.
Oh, they're not.
So it's, it's, you could do either, it's doing either. It's realizing that there are natural views on sloped property, and that you should allow the public to retain some of those natural views when your project is completed. So whether that's part of a streetscape, or whether that's a little gathering space, or views in between buildings, but you have to be able to get to those views in between buildings. So I think this is, this is just recognizing that there's some value to topography in terms of views, and that should be considered when the project gets put together.
Last language better.
Can I make an attempt to, I think that, so this is to provide public vistas from out, so from a point the public can go to a view platform and view out, right? It's not that the public can look up at the, at your development and view natural areas. So viewing in versus viewing out from the, that was my...
It's viewing out to the natural vistas, not...
From the development?
Yes.
Not, not the public's view of your development from somewhere else where you can see it because of grade changes.
No, not intended to be that at all.
Okay, well, clearly it's hugely problematic, because it takes us asking questions to figure out what the, what it means. So we either have to take it out, or it needs to be better, it needs to be a better sense. We can't have, we can't have this, I mean, it's, it's, we can't have this conversation every time somebody comes in about what it means, and, I mean, it's just, that doesn't work.
Is the, so the intent, in your opinion, is not captured by provide public vistas of natural areas?
I'm sorry?
Is the, is the intent captured by provide public vistas of natural areas?
No, he had to explain it to us over a five minute period.
Well, she took out the grade change.
Oh, provide.
Provide.
Right.
Oh. I don't think so, because you were specifically talking about topography.
Right.
By the way, this only exists in West Newport.
Right.
How many properties are left?
Two. Two.
I'm fine with you want to wordsmith it.
Okay.
I think we should take it out.
Take it out?
It's my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm putting on here "take out" or "better define." What do you think? I'm not, I'm not opposed to leaving it if it's better defined, and I agree with the definition, or if I agree with the statement.
Okay.
I'll have to see it. Okay, 3.1, "Provide non-motorized mobility improvements that facilitate connections to Lake Smamish State Park, Cougar Mountain Trailhead, and Regional Growth Center."
My comments on this one is that it partly seems to overlap with 2.1. Otherwise, I think it's...
Different direction. So, so the, the access to the Lake Smamish State Park is on the north end of this neighborhood, right? These other things are on the south end of this neighborhood. There's, like, for example, REVA didn't complete their boardwalk connection to Gateway's Boardwalk, so a easy connection to the Trailhead is going to be missing for quite a few folks.
Okay, so maybe I can specify. I think that is, I agree with that, but there is, so "support connections to Cougar Mountain Trailhead," right, is 2.1, and then 3.1 has "provide non-motorized mobility improvements of facility connections to, including Cougar Mountain Trailhead." So I think it's just Cougar Mountain Trailhead that is in both, and is both pedestrian bicycle, and then referred to as "non-motorized mobility improvements." Am I, that seems very similar, different wording, to me.
Okay. Okay.
These, these, these are quite a range, right? To facilitate a connection to Lake Smamish State Park is quite different than facilitating a connection to Regional Growth Center. Right? Because the connection to the state park is a huge piece of infrastructure, over, under a highway.
Right.
Footprint may be different, quite different. But this is not really saying, "build a connection," it's facilitate. So what is, what are you trying to get at with that?
So, so right now, the I-90 non-motorized crossing is on our obligation. That's a city expectation that we're going to work with WashDOT to create that. This is simply getting people to that space. So, right now, Gateway has the southern landing, but, for example, the Vet property may or may not have any connections to those non-motorized walkways to get there, right? They may have to go up onto Newport and come down through the entrance of Gateway to actually get there.
Okay, did you say Gateway has a landing?
Yeah.
That's carved out?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that. You're allowed to smile. That's a good one. Smile.
We do do some things.
Okay, so do you want to make changes, or are you suggesting changes to this?
Well, I didn't understand it, so now I, he, facilitate connections. So, you're, boy, I just think of, I, I'm having to make a mind shift, because, again, we're talking about non-motorized circulation. We have, and if the Green Necklace doesn't do it for us, what, okay, we're saying, we're going to just drop them in, in neighborhoods, and name-specific experiences, if we want something that's not in the Green Necklace. I, I, there are concepts that should be captured in the Green Necklace, indeed. That's what should be enforceable.
Were you, anything else on this one? Or are you making, okay. Provide amenities for transit use.
We have nothing in the SIDS on that at all. What do you mean by amenities? Like, shelter to, at the bus stop?
Mm-hmm.
We don't have, we don't have this anywhere else?
Not that I could find.
So here's the, so here's how I envision some of these conversations going. First of all, if it's not in here, there's no conversation we had. If it's in here, it's, look, you have to provide amenities for transit use. And then, there's going to be a conversation about what that might be, and if I own a property, and I think it's not reasonable, then I'm going to fight that. But if it's not in there, there's not even a conversation. It provides at least for dialogue, conversation, negotiation.
But my question really was around, I seem to recall us covering this elsewhere. That is, and I would just, that should be enforceable. You're saying no?
I did not see it in the SIDS. It may be in here somewhere, but I did not see it. I can ask my staff to double-check for me on that one.
Well, amenities would be covered, covered areas, and maybe bike rack. Is there anything else that would be, okay, so maybe just put in what amenities means.
4.1, "Provide viewing platforms, educational opportunities, or other measures to help promote the value of the natural environment."
I like the spirit of this one a lot. I think that, I think, by viewing platforms, I mean, I think, again, this is one where there's the other measures, and it leaves it, to me, makes it difficult to know what you might get with other measures. But I know that there's a balance between being overly, overly specific and allowing them to figure out a way to meet the obligation, so I'm okay with it.
What does "educational opportunities" imply?
Might be a, like a sign, you know, that says that...
Interpretive sign.
Yeah, tells you what you're looking at. Tells you what you should pick, not pick.
Is it anything more than that? See, I mean, is interpretive signage?
It might be about the cycle of like, you know, how the wetlands work in terms of filtering pollutants out. I mean, it could be all sorts of things. If it's, you know, if it's a rain garden, you know, it might be something about, you know, how that works.
Okay, I find "educational opportunities" just open for interpretation. If it's some type of signage, then it should say that. There's a, because I've been a lot of places, there's a little, a little packet of folded eight and a half by 11 pieces of paper for you to pick up and look at, in a little plastic holder over here on this bench. That's, I don't think that that's the spirit. I like the way, you know, this, I don't think that's the in-spirit of what you're trying to do. But it could meet it. So, I thought, I think that "educational opportunities" is too vague.
Did you have a suggestion, Paul?
Well, I, that's, I, somehow the word signage, when you, the examples you referenced, yeah, you know, immediately popped to mind what I know is over at the Fish Hatchery. And I was up at a place near Carnation not long ago, along the Snoqualmie River. And surprisingly, quite far along under the trail, there was signage. There was, it was, it helped you interpret what was happening here at Chinook River Bend Park. All of that is signage to me.
Okay. I can, I can swap out opportunities for signage.
And I'm fine with the language that you land on. I don't necessarily agree that other measures or educational opportunities is, I understand it's not specific and definite about what it could be, but I like the idea that it's open to some degree, because maybe something cool that we miss by limiting it to certain things.
Right.
Anyway. 4.2, incorporate green building measures. Or did you have something else? I'm sorry.
No, this was one of Paul's big ones. So, did you talk to David? We're on 4.2.
Yes, I did. Incorporate green building measures?
Yes.
Yeah, definitely. There is a section, I think it's a 4.1 in there, or 1.4, or something that says, hey, you know, we should update our sub-area plans to incorporate some of these sustainable building action plan elements. And I think that this would be, this can be really, as a developer obligation inside a only one neighborhood, I think this is a, something else that is applicable to the entire sub-area.
It is.
It's in every neighborhood.
It is, okay. All right, I know I, for some reason, I thought that. But, and, and I think there is some really good language. I think there are specifics, I mean, I, I would, this should, I don't know, I don't have language for you, but this should be a much stronger tie back to, and if we want to put some teeth into this, because, and I know you guys had this conversation, the way it's written right now, incorporate green building measures, there's room in there for it to actually come lower than what we were shooting for with our sustainable building action strategy.
Absolutely. This is a low bar.
This, and so, if, but we, we adopted that, and it's, it's pretty progressive. So, somehow, I would, I think we should be, if we want to incorporate green building measures, and I apologize, Keith, I, I, maybe, I don't know, maybe it's replicated in every neighborhood. I just, to me, this, this is the entire sub-area. And...
It is. In everyone.
It is.
And maybe it's one of those things that go, because there is, there is, you have a, you have a sustainable section above every neighborhood.
Right.
I'm just wondering if it shouldn't go up there.
Okay.
You, so what I don't know is, so this, so part of what we're trying to do here is move the needle, I think. And I have heard some concern, if Councilmember March was here, he might express additional concern as well, that we try and move the needle too far, in terms of putting the obligation so onerous that the development community, you know, bats back. And so for this one, this is going from nothing, you know, code silence, just, hey, we, we do like to be a green city. You know, whenever we build a fire station, you know, we've hit platinum, I don't know what the next one's going to be, super platinum. You know, this is telling builders, you know, we expect something. That's a low bar. If you're telling me you think we should actually say something beyond this, and maybe we reference the green building initiatives, or the sustainable building initiatives, I can put that language in. I, I'm trying to not push farther than you guys want. So this is where I'm trying to understand.
Sustainable Building Action Plan is, it's, it is a framework, and the concept behind it is, okay, as we do, well, part of the, one of the, one of the actions in there is, as we do sub-area plan updates, hey, incorporate some of the elements in here. This just doesn't do that. And, and so are we, are you saying, we don't want to go, and are we, if we, if this language is saying, we actually don't want to go as far as our Sustainable Building Action Plan that we adopted, saying we wanted to do. So I think you're saying, yeah, you, you want, you're specifically trying to be lower.
I don't know how far you want to go with this one.
Yeah, all right. So my call would be, I, I think there's, there was a lot of effort, and it's a, it's a pretty phenomenal plan, actually, the Sustainable Building Action Plan. And somehow, this update to this sub-area plan needs to have, I, I think it should reference it, at least by name, and which it, and, it has tiers of, of performance in it as well. So I think this is one of those, I think there's a little mini work session here for us to get re-familiar with what's in there, and saying, you know, this is, we're ready at this point to try to obligate this level of our Sustainable Building Action Plan. We're, that's what I wish this did. We're not there.
So, can you and David, I'm going to make a suggestion. Is it possible for you and David to talk about, I haven't revisited it. I don't want to have a mini work session about it tonight. Could you revisit that and determine what might be appropriate? If one of the first level tiers is incorporate in, as we update sub-area plans, then I think we do that. But, is that okay, Paul? I would have to revisit it myself, so I, I don't know that I am, I'm not prepared to figure out what...
Yeah.
So, how's that? And they can...
Love to hear your suggestion.
Okay.
Okay.
You think about that?
Oh, it sounds, sounds logical to refer to where there's more detail.
4.3, "Protect and enhance natural areas and wildlife corridors." Who's going to speak against this? Stoking.
Well, so help me, what, yeah, who, I mean, it's, yeah, Motherhood, Apple High, natural areas. Right on.
Yeah.
How do you, how do you, how do you, what kind of conversation does this, kind of leverage does this give you?
So, if you have a degraded, let's say, a degraded wetland on your property, you know, if you're going to, if you're going to get into that buffer, or that critical area, we can require mitigation as a way to bring it back to where it should be. If you stay out of it, then we can't. It's, you know, you just say, well, I'm not getting in it. I'm going to put up a sign that says, here's a wetland. And that wetland may be full of re-canary grass or invasives. And so what this is saying is, you're going to have to actually make it better, even if you stay out of it. Plus, the protect is, you know, is important, too. We want to make sure that those areas are kind of kept off the beaten path, unless we intend for there to be a trail in it. So...
Want to change it?
I think I just learned that this would be unique to the central area. And if somebody does any type of development on property or redevelopment, but they don't get into any of the buffer areas, we, we would have this "enhance," especially if it's degraded. So I, so I understand, I understand that. I, I don't know what "enhance," we're going to get anything with just "enhance." Restoring to kind of its natural state is, I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, look at the, the scale of what was done at some of our parks, such as Confluence, for example. I mean, it was, it was pretty damn significant on Main Stem, Eastem, and then the buffer around it, right? Really restoring that. So if, if, if what you're saying is restore, that I would understand. I don't, I don't understand enhanced natural areas, what that, what's, how that's going to get us anything. And I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that. You're not going to touch it, but it's on your land, so you got it, we're going to make you go do this. I think that's, that might be a yard too far for me as well.
What about taking out "enhance"? Protecting.
What would that be? So, what does "protect" mean?
Put a fence around it.
Okay, so, I mean, we already have stormwater requirements, right? There's, there's other things in code and regulations that we have. We're going to make sure that the development isn't going to degrade those areas, right? So...
Right. Stormwater will not...
Was a great example, right?
Yeah, will not degrade.
Right, right. And, okay.
Thank you.
I, I think that this does get at conservation and restoration, which are the terms that are frequently used in land management. So, I, I... So I, I, I am okay with these words, but I think an alternative that, I, yeah, I'm suggesting the alternative, which would be conserve and restore natural areas and wildlife corridors. And I also noticed that from previous versions, it just had wildlife corridors, and I think the natural areas is important and expands it, because otherwise you get into arguing what's a wildlife corridor and what's not.
Right.
Okay, so, alternative language, conserve and restore, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Are we ready to move on to Pickering? 1.2, we already talked about? I'm sorry, 1.1 and 2.1. Is there having to do with housing? I'm assuming that we would want it to be the same as we already talked about.
Can you read it for me? Like, somehow I got numbers next up here.
1.1 is encourage a variety of housing choices, parentheses, size, tenure, et cetera, are available, including affordable housing. And 2.1 is
Oh, okay.
Encourage the provision of smaller size. So we, I thought we, did we combine those?
Right.
And we already just discussed what the language of, alternative language would be for 1.1.
Yes.
Okay. 1.2. And let's also skip down to 4.1 and 4.2, we've already talked about.
Yep.
So we won't revisit those.
Can I ask a question about
Yeah.
One that is not, so the protect and enhance natural areas and wildlife corridors is not in Pickering. There are open spaces and natural areas in Pickering. And so I would advocate for putting that one in this neighborhood. I'm unclear on why it's not in that neighborhood.
Because PPC didn't want it. I'm just kidding. So I, I don't disagree.
Which one did you want to put down in there?
I want to put
West Newport, 4.3 in
Into Pickering.
Oh, okay. Wouldn't that go in all of them?
It would.
It doesn't currently.
Okay, so I would be in favor of adding 4.3 to all of the neighborhoods?
Yeah.
Agree.
Okay.
So the next one, that's a new topic?
Yep.
Is 1.2, ensure the amount of non-regisidential square footage or job opportunities is not reduced during redevelopment. So, um, actually, I'm not opposed to this one right now, but I know there is opposition to it, so.
I think this is an issue that requires its own track. This is its own legislation. I, I, I think that, I know when it was introduced to us here in this room the first time, no, there was no research. There was nothing that the staff could offer to us that said that, that, to, that backed up this, other than what the words really, all that the words say. There was nothing done anywhere else, or, or any research or study behind the potential ramifications of this. I think this is an interesting question, and I, I propose that this is a topic that gets its own track. This is, this is a big deal. This is a really big deal. And I don't, and there's understandings of jobs and housing balance that we're not all on the same page on, and, and I think it requires its, its whole own process.
Vicki.
I, I agree with Councilmember Winterstein. I think that this does have really big ramifications. I also don't, I think there are a lot of situations where this could be difficult to understand how to implement, and what, what job opportunities is not reduced actually means. And so I am in favor, unless this can be really clarified, which I think is a really big lift, I am in favor of dropping this one.
Okay.
For future consideration. I think this is a defer item.
Right, that, you made that clear. So we've got a two-to-one remove? I don't suppose, I don't support that, but that's just. Okay, 1.3, provide plazas, trails, cafes, and outdoor seating opportunities to create social engagement opportunities and connect people with onsite and adjacent open space areas.
So this is the same as 1.1 in West Newport, except it has cafes?
So my question is, why cafes?
Because both Pickering and Gilman are envisioned as more kind of 24/7 neighborhoods than West Newport is, so that's why the cafes were added.
Well, the only problem I have is with the cafes, because it's, you're requiring a specific use, which seems a little odd, for a specific business use. So if somebody wants to redevelop one of the strip malls
Yep.
You say, all good, you got to have a cafe in there. I don't think we can do that. I don't think you can require the landlord to get a cafe tenant. I would love it, but I don't think we can.
I don't disagree.
Other thoughts on that one? Or other, we disagree, or different thoughts?
I agree. I think that, I think plazas, trails, and connecting people with adjacent open space areas all go together. Cafe is like a specific kind of a restaurant, so I, I think it's fine to
There's
To include it, but not
One of these things is not like the other. Any other comments? If not, we'll move on.
What was the, we, we discussed the form of this one up in West Newport. What do you have for that?
Well, it was worded differently.
Um.
Just wanted to know what Keith wrote for that. No, it's, can't see the
So this one, this one, we had the private amenities piece, so we took private out. So it was just provide amenities, parks, trails, outdoor seating, that creates social opportunities and connect people with onsite or adjacent open space areas for residents of the project. And so this one would be for residents or employees of the project, because this could be a office building or project. Right?
I think also, in retrospect to the amenities in 1.1 could include plazas. I don't see why that's in one and not in the other. And, sorry, 1.1 in
In West Newport.
West Newport.
Okay.
Are we ready for 1.4? Make convenient access to Lake Sammamish State Park a priority.
You want me to unpack that one, or?
Vicki has a question or a comment?
Okay.
The, the format of this one is different than of other ones, and I think if it followed the same format, it would be provide convenient access to Lake Sammamish State Park. Is there a reason that this one talks to priority? Okay.
Um, okay, no, that, that works for me.
Still makes consistent with other language.
Yeah.
So there is a, by the way, there's, there is a, it's number 11, the green, in the Green Necklace Plan, tries to address the same thing. That needs to be reconciled.
Okay.
Ready for 1.5?
Yeah.
Provide amenities for people of all ages.
Open space. Oh, you don't have that in there.
Provide amenities for people of all ages.
So this one's super vague. This came, I, I think the commission felt like it was important for, especially Pickering and Gilman, to be accommodating for all ages. So, you know, little kids, seniors, young adults. And so, so the amenities piece, we could, we could include recreational amenities or recreational social amenities. Seems like it wants a little bit more description, if you want to keep it.
So I don't know that I have a problem with amenities, because again, I think it's sort of the leaving it open enough for creative ideas.
Right.
I think the first question is, you know, the one that Vicki had talked about earlier, and that is, so does every property owner that builds or redevelops have to provide something that ages
Ages
Ages from 1 to 100? And I think, no. I think the idea is that you have amenities for all ages throughout a district.
Within them.
And so I, I would say that that needs to be wordsmithed somewhat, so that, you know, just, there should, there shall be amenities for all ages throughout the, within the neighborhood, or something like that.
Okay.
So if somebody comes along and, you know, four developments later, you've got four tot lots, you're like, no, you don't want another tot lot. Or, I don't know, I'm just
Yeah.
I'm not saying no, you know, that would be my suggestion.
Okay.
So, can we reword this, or move it up?
I would reword it, because we're trying to codify it, and give Heath the teeth that he needs to say, no, we already have four tot lots, we need a
Giant chess set.
Giant chess set.
Well, maybe we don't want Keith doing that.
So I, that's what I would suggest. And then I think it's clear that, first of all, it's clear that you don't have to have it on every property, and, and what you're trying to accomplish.
I think we are trying to get the variety in the neighborhood. I think that was the missing piece.
1.6, provide weather protection for primary pedestrian walkways, seating areas, and transit I really like that, um, because what I really don't like, and I'm hoping this captures this, is when you have this, what looks to be an attempt at weather protection, and it's not. So you're either crammed up against a window, or you're constantly dripped on, and then you have to go through the gap, and then, I mean, it's, I'm as a walk in the rain. So
Where the parking lot?
I don't know what primary pedestrian walkways means.
So, so I was trying to capture, so right now, the SIDS covers like building frontage. So a certain percentage of your building frontage needs weather protection. But if you're, if you've got like a primary, think about like on a college campus, where you have primary walkways that go between buildings, you know, right now, we don't say anything about weather protection for that at all. And so it was trying to capture the fact that there are primary pathways through projects that people walk. And then there's going to be some other places that people go around, you know, they cut to the parking lot or whatever. It's not saying you need weather protection over everything, just kind of the primary ones.
And primaries not defined any better than that? Let's, let's consider an existing development over, in the Safeway, across the
Commons?
Yeah, the Commons, north side of that, there's a building that has some clothier and food. There's a walkway between those two areas, crosses a street, well, at least inside the parking lot street.
I think that's
Because you're, like, is that an example? You, you want coverage, and 100% all primary walkways? Is that, was that what this is striving to do?
It doesn't say 100%. You know, so
It doesn't say that, but it just, but when it says provide
Right.
I don't know where the exception is.
You're putting umbrellas.
You know, I think part of the reason why, you know, we want the ability to be reasonable with people, too, right? And I think part of this is, okay, if I've got a walkway, and I'm expecting people to walk from here to there, you know, maybe it is continuous weather protection. Maybe it's, maybe it's places where you can run in between the weather protection and not get too wet. I mean, right now, it leaves it open. And if, if the council would rather it be continuous, I can do that. That's, that's a lot of expense. You can get developers to provide some weather protection without too much of a struggle.
I'd like to, I'd like to leave it in and see what we, see what we get. I mean
And this is, and, and this is, to your point, Stacy, you know, one of the things that we talked about is, this isn't going to be perfect.
No.
Oh, my gosh. But it gets us a long ways down the track, and I'm looking at Mel, because the way that this will work is, we're going to get some projects that come in, and we're going to say, all right, show me your weather protection, and they're going to show us a little bit on each end and nothing in the middle, and we'll be like, oh, wait, what, what about the rest? And we'll have a conversation. And we'll probably get more than we would get otherwise. And if we find that we're always ending low, then we change it. We go back to continuous weather protection or something else, right? If we feel like that's important for us as a community.
I, okay, so this one is very similar in my mind to 3.2 of West Newport, which was, but which was more vague. So provide amenities for transit use. And I think that we could just do, in, in West Newport, we could do provide weather protection for primary pedestrian walkways, seating areas, and transit stops. And then, so basically, put that in both.
So you want 1.6 in Pickering to go to, to replace 3.2 in West Gilman?
Or add it?
In, in West, so in West Newport, it says provide amenities for transit use, and we talked a little bit about that. And those amenities are maybe bike racks, but probably
A shelter.
Probably a bus shelter.
Right.
And so this has weather protection for transit stops, right?
Right.
Seems like the same. It's an expansion, but.
Is this, 1.6, provide weather protection, would this apply to a single-family home?
This would, so there won't be any single-family homes in Pickering?
Okay.
Oh, but there would be in West Newport?
There would be in West Newport.
I should think it would just be commercial and multifamily that it applies to?
Yes.
We should make that
Okay.
Somehow clear.
Okay. Right. So the pedestrian walkway is because it's essentially a commercial area
Commercial and multifamily projects.
You could just say excluding
Okay, that, no, I, I think I retract my comment then.
It, it's a reason why this one's different than West Newport, I think.
Right, 2.1, we already dealt with 2.1. 2.2, provide appropriate lighting to promote evening public activity.
It's not in the SIDS, I checked.
It should be.
Well
Kind of evening public activity, I retract.
You know, I mean, so part of it is just, you know, having evening lights around, you know, cafes, and, you know, things that we expect to be open after dark, you know? If there's a pub, and you want the area to be well-lit, so it doesn't look like you're going to get mugged, or the gas lamp, you know, when you walk out. I mean, it's, 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 if we expect, if we, that was a joke, if we expect, if we expect these places to be more, I'm not saying 24/7, but at least active into the evenings, you need to have outdoor lighting to facilitate that. So
Outdoor lighting. Provide appropriate outdoor lighting.
3.1? We need the other, we need the other side of the bridge.
It'd be a trampoline.
So this was one of the ones why, as appropriate So this was one of the ones why as appropriate, because that will not apply to anybody other than the DNR property.
Okay, so my only question about this one is, right, it doesn't apply to anybody except for one property.
Yeah.
So is the appropriate place to put it in developer obligations for the Central Issaquah Plan, which is where it currently lives?
I don't know where else you'd put it, frankly.
How did we get the landing on Gateway?
We told them that they had to provide it, I assume.
You assume?
I wasn't at the table, so I don't know exactly how that conversation went down. But I think what we told them was the plan showed a non-vehicular crossing and we needed a landing. And so they gave us a landing. So it's, it's, it's encumbered by an easement. So it's not like there's some grandiose concrete landing pad. It's just basically an encumbrance on the property. And then at some point, when we get ready to build a bridge, or WashDOT does, they've got a place to put, to connect it in, hopefully, to both sides of our community.
Okay, so it's just an easement?
It's just an easement. Yeah, you can't go out there and find our landing, probably.
I didn't expect that. Okay.
So enforcement of this would be when WashDOT is...
DNR. So when DNR came in to redevelop their office buildings, so DNR owns those two office buildings across from the state park. And if they came in to redevelop, what we would say is, oh, you need to give us an easement for a bridge landing.
What it should say, it should provide easement for a bridge landing.
Maybe they just want to...
I can do that.
Or deed the property. Maybe it should say provide the property. So, I don't know. I don't know why we need to get locked into easement.
Well, so when I first read this, I thought, yeah, am I going to go out there and find concrete? Somebody's built a landing? Or whatever, a footer, a pad? No, we just have an easement.
Okay, I'm going to put...
I understand Stacy's point, there might be other ways to do that. But this is not about building, this is not pouring concrete.
Nope.
This is about providing access.
Yep. All right.
Yeah.
So it'll be, it'll say pub, legal public access?
3.2, facilitate access to the state park.
So I don't know why that's different than 1.4. So I'm going to combine 1.4 and 3.2.
I think, well, so 1.4 is now, the recommendation would be to make that a provide statement like the other statements. And then I think 3.2 is completely duplicative, so it can go away.
Okay, 4.1 should be the same as the one above? So it's...
Yep, and 4.2, we've already talked about. The next one's Gilman. We've already dealt with 1.1. We've already dealt with 1.2. We've already dealt with 1.3, 1.4. Now, speak up if you think they need to be different in this neighborhood.
Keep going Stacy.
Could you scroll?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Stacy's moving fast.
I'm sorry, yeah.
There we go.
So 1.4, 1.5, 2.1, we've done. 2.2. I'm going to skip 3.1 and 3.2. Assuming we want them to be the same, we've dealt with 4.1 and 4.3. So by my count, the first one we would talk about is 3.1. Provide for transit pedestrian and bicycle circulation from Pickering to Gilman. Pickering to Gilman, so the overcrossing?
This doesn't want to be a developer obligation.
Okay.
This wants to be our obligation.
We'll take it out?
Yeah, it's a city, it turns into a city expectation if it's not already listed there, so I'll double check.
3.2, compel properties along Mall and Gilman to provide active social areas.
Well, and the problem with this one is, obviously, we don't have a plan for Mall or Gilman yet. I mean, we've got a corridor study underway for Gilman. Mall Street's TBD.
Is it premature?
It, well, the question is, I don't want to miss any opportunities, right? And especially on Mall, which we think is going to be this friendlier, less vehicle-oriented thing, whether it's a promenade or a something. I don't know.
It seems premature to me. I don't...
So defer to corridor plan?
I don't like to miss opportunities, but I'm not sure we're going to miss a lot of oppo... I don't know how much of Mall is going to be redeveloped. And then are we, is redevelopment now really going to, we really need to provide social areas, active social areas? We were to develop any part of Mall Street right now without our plan? You don't...
I think there is also, already in this neighborhood and in the other neighborhoods, this provision, provide plazas, trails, and to create social engagement opportunities and connect people with onsite and adjacent open spaces. So there is social engagement opportunities in there.
Well, and you guys are already, so here, you guys, so this is the area that you adopted the VMU overlay. So this streetscape, so whatever Mall becomes is going to be vibrant just because of the density that's going to happen there. So, so I'm, I would say that we probably are okay. Probably, I don't think we're going to miss much. And if we get a project where we feel like we did miss the boat, then obviously we'll have to come back in and fix, but...
Obviously, so the VMU is not on the existing Mall Street?
Well, the existing Mall Street only goes from SR 900 to 12th.
Right.
You know, and so as Mall is extended further to the east, all the way to 7th...
Yes.
You know, the question is, is what happens along that street, right?
Okay, so the way this reads, it's all of Mall. It doesn't...
Right, it's expected, yeah, it's anticipated to be the entire, as it shows up in the circulation plan, not as it exists today. But...
I think the Gilman corridor, we're, we're doing that and, and that's deliberate. I don't think that one should be here. Mall, I, it's, and I, we haven't really, there's, the council hasn't expressed a vision for Mall yet.
Right. So let's, we'll, we'll take this out. We'll, you know, I think that it, those conversations want to be with the corridor plans.
Right, and to Vicky's point as well, there, where's a number of other places where we're addressing the active social areas.
Yep. Okay. What's 4.2, your next one Stacy?
Yep, encourage a gain of employment through redevelopment.
So this, this has obviously a couple pieces to it that we're going to need to talk about. One is encourage, and does that get us anything at all? This one, and the reason why I think there was a push for Gilman, and you didn't see that in Pickering, is Pickering's got Costco. And I think that the desire to beef up employment density in Pickering wasn't there. But in Gilman, you know, right now, we have, we have a couple office buildings, but it's, for the most part, it's, it's retail and it's pretty low density. And so I think, you know, this wasn't just about for conversation from Pickering on 1.2. This one was actually, let's beef the numbers up. Let's, let's really make Gilman an employment area, more than it is now. So I'll stop talking.
There's no, there's no harm, there's no harm in leaving this in, in here because it says encourage. But I, you know, I do think that the bigger issue is the conversation that we talked about earlier.
Yeah.
So I think we can still do this and keep track of, I mean, if, if either one of you has heartburn about it, we just take it out because it's just encourage. Take it out?
I, I think we should.
Okay.
And for the reason that you said, we're going to have that other conversation, I hope.
Okay.
Eastlake.
Thought you were done.
No, I was going to ramble.
Okay, I will cut off the rambling then.
Eastlake?
Yeah, Eastlake. I think we already did 2.1, or 1.1, provide amenities. We wordsmithed that earlier, if I'm not mistaken. 1.2, encourage a variety of housing, we did that. Convenient access to Lake Sammamish State Park, the square footage and job opportunities we've done. Skip 2.1. Weather protection we've done. 3.2, we have not. And 4.1, we have not. So unless I'm mistaken, we would start with 2.1. Provide well-sighted connections to regional trail opportunities. Well...
So right now, so right now, the reason why these are here is, you know, right now, you have East Lake Sammamish, you have King County's East Lake Sammamish Trail in this neighborhood. You also have the High Point Trail comes in, right? So that comes in down Preston Trail. So, so there are some regional trails that kind of leaf in through this neighborhood. And so part of why I think you see 2.1 is, we want, we want people to connect to those. We want to, we want to highlight that they're part of this neighborhood.
I don't have any issue with that. I think well-sighted, I don't, that seems a little odd, just because... As opposed to what? Early cited?
I think it's convenient is what it wants to be.
Okay. I'm fine with...
I'm going to ask a little bit about this. The, what's the DA we did, the three trails crossing?
Gilman Lofts.
Gilman Lofts. We, in that DA, we did something like this. Right? Is that what you're, is that what you are envisioning? It says provide well-sighted connections. I'm not sure. We're getting a little bit more there, right? I think they're even putting seating and picnic tables?
There's a plaza that's next to the trail that's...
They're activating the area between their building and the trail.
They're making that connection, yes. So we're actually trying...
I think what your point, what you're trying to get to perhaps Paul is, could, could we get more than just connections? Is that what you're thinking of?
Yeah, well, yes.
Okay. Can you beef it up?
Yeah, yeah.
What you want me to do, beef it up?
And all I can do at this hour is point to that example at Gilman Lofts. And I'm not sure what that language would look like.
Okay, is that okay, Vicky?
Yes, I would also just, I think it's regional trails.
And it's, and it's where applicable.
Right.
Yeah, you want opportunities off, just regional trails.
I don't know what, I don't know what...
Not, yeah. 3.2, provide wayfinding for local and regional trail users. This is back to the wayfinding dilemma about how we don't have a program yet and so we've got inconsistent stuff. I would rather have something than nothing, I guess.
I would too. So, so the question is, I mean, I get, I don't disagree with your point, Paul. I don't want 45 different wayfinding signs out there. And the question is, what do we do as a stopgap until we actually get our branding and wayfinding plan done? And so, you know, could, could they pay into a wayfinding sign plan so that when the city does get it done, we can actually install them on their property? I don't know the answer to that. I mean, I think that...
Are you serious?
I was being serious. So rather than have them put up a, a inconsistent sign, they could pay into a fund and then...
One of the challenges of a citywide wayfinding program and having a design is the cost. There'll be a significant capital cost to do this.
So I don't have an issue, problem with that, if you want to do some pay in lieu, but it's not in here.
Okay.
Say that again Stacy?
There's no pay in lieu.
Pay in lieu of...
Yeah, in lieu of...
At the discretion of the city.
And so the city needs the, the authority and the, I don't know that the right, I mean, you can't just, you can't just go in and say, I don't want to do this, will you take my money? Instead he goes, sure, I'll take your $1,000. It doesn't work that way. So you have to have some mechanism for receiving that money.
Right.
Yes, and, and, and what's the scope of this? Is, or is your concept that every property has signage?
I mean, I think you usually, I mean, so the wayfinding plan is going to dictate where we put those signs, right? And so it's going to be at junctions, most likely, you know? So that if you have, whatever your decision point is, I can go here, I can go here, I want to know what is in those locations. So I don't, I don't, I don't know.
I believe strongly that we do need a citywide wayfinding plan and, and implementation plan and a way, and way to do that. Think about this. This is the subarea. So I don't know, where are you at? I'm sorry, I'm actually not thinking very clearly here now. What do you, what do you have?
So right now, we're going to be, provide wayfinding or fee in lieu of, at the discretion of the city for local and regional trail users.
It's going to need a little bit more vetting by...
Jim?
Yeah, Jim, to see what we can do. I, but I think that's a fine, I think that's a great idea. And it's not going to be every property, it's just going to be ones where you think, you know, you're here at a junction, you need to provide this. So can we move on to the next one? Is that okay, Paul?
Yeah.
Okay. Last one here in Eastlake, provide rec, and the reason I'm speeding this along here is because it's 20 to 10. We're all getting tired. And 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 new ones in the next one, and I'm terrified. And I'm starting to get to the grumpy hour.
Okay.
Provide recreational opportunities and amenities along the trails or in local, small local gathering spaces. I actually don't like this one very much because...
Okay, let's get rid of this one.
Well, so I think a trail is a recreational amenity.
Yeah.
Small, what are you going to do in a small local gathering place? Provide what? If it's a small local gathering place, that's, that is what it is. So I would, I don't like this one, actually.
Okay, I'm seeing three nods.
Thank you, I didn't understand. Recreational opportunities, that's what I got hung up on. I agree a trail is one in and of itself.
Confluence, I think we already did 1.1. Provide private amenities. And then next page, we already identified, sorry, the last, so we already did the last three. Encourage a variety of housing, protect and enhance natural areas and incorporated green building. So 1.2, neighborhood serving, small-scale employment opportunities are encouraged.
Sorry, can I just make one?
Oh, sure.
I think that, so encourage a variety of housing, exist for different populations. I think that wording is different there, I just think it should be the same wording on all of them.
I'll fix, yeah, I'll fix that to be consistent.
Yeah, thank you. So 1.2, neighborhood serving, small-scale employment opportunities are encouraged. So I actually think this doesn't belong in here because I think the type of business that, that somebody is going to, they're going to come in with a plan already.
Right.
And so somebody comes in with a business plan and they say, you know, we've decided that, you know, this neighborhood is a good place to open up a... that, you know, this neighborhood is a good place to open up a aunt's store, or I don't know what's an example. They're like, you know what? I don't know what the example is, I just don't think that's, I don't think it's appropriate in here.
Okay.
I agree. I think being encouraged in this one is, we talk about provide versus encourage. This one, encourage is not, there's gonna be different factors that really drive what happens there. Our word encouraged isn't going to do it.
Doesn't matter. Provide wayfinding to amenities located just outside this neighborhood.
So, so this is, so, so the reason why this is here...
Trying to get people away from Confluence? I don't get it.
So this is, so this, this neighborhood sits in an interesting space, right next to Old Town, right? And right next to the denser parts of Central Issaquah. So, so this is, this is the Confluence. This is the, the area in between. And providing people kind of guidance through the area, like if you're, if you're on the Rainier Trail, you know, and, and want to get to Old Town, you know, having some, something that points you in that direction is good, right? So that's why this is here. If you guys don't know about it, that's fine, but this one's...
This just seems kind of...
I think that, I think that concept is, I mean, I think that, I, I just think that it, the way it's worded, it emphasizes that there are amenities.
It's, it's the scarecrow. This is what I think, so one of the things that I, that I, in the visions, I'm not gonna ramble, but I, I know we've, we're recommending, gonna recommend reducing it to five, and they're supposed to have distinct neighborhoods. You know, this is not the boroughs of New York. This is a very relatively small area. I have a hard time believing that we are gonna have super distinct neighborhoods anyway.
I agree.
I also, so I think we're gonna have a challenge with that. I'm trying to try to go along with it, but I, I'm not sure it's gonna be like, oh, now you've entered Confluence. I, and now you've entered, but more, I guess more to the point is, it's not so big that we're gonna need wayfinding to figure out a way to get out of the neighborhood.
Okay.
It's not like the Museum of Modern Art is that way, or miles away, but we know you all want to get there.
Okay.
If this provision turned into just something more wayfinding, like we've already discussed, and we're just saying, yeah, guess what? Our wayfinding plan will cover this area too.
Right. Okay.
2.1, provide public access to Issaquah Creek to serve as a central neighborhood open space spine.
That's what it says.
That's what it says, Keith.
Don't we already have public access to Issaquah Creek, like in Confluence?
So we do for part of it, right? I mean, so Confluence and Salmon Run and Burnston Park, is that possible?
Those are in what neighborhood?
Well, so, so Confluence is not in Confluence, right? So, you know, but Salmon Run is.
Salmon Run and Burnston Park, and then the one up by Atlas.
Yes.
Okay, so...
Public access.
I forgot what it's called. Yes. So, but, but there's areas in between, right? So there's more, there's more spaces that we're trying to get people to next to the creek.
So we have had an informal policy for a long time of trying to acquire properties on the creek.
Right.
And I've wondered for a long time when we're, and we've talked about creating this ability for the public to walk from one end of Issaquah Creek through town to the other seamlessly. I can see how this might provide some of those connections. But I'm, I'm, I don't know why this doesn't do it for me. Maybe because we've got the park strategic plan isn't done. Maybe it's the language. Maybe it's the word spine. So I'm...
I think, I think that this is one place where we could use the look to the Green Necklace wording and the parks plan wording because there they do use this metaphor of a spine connecting, and I think it works there. I think here it kind of comes out of the blue. And so I think we should just look at that and either refer to it or, or change the wording so it agrees with that. But I like the idea of providing public access to Issaquah Creek.
Okay.
I agree with that.
I think this, this was one where definitely, I think maybe a reference to the Green Necklace makes sense.
That's what I think it should be.
Okay.
2.2, provide project elements, i.e. balconies, front entryways to ensure residents feel connected to neighborhoods.
To neighbors.
Oh, sorry, neighbors. Provide project elements to ensure residents feel connected. Yeah, I, I don't want to ascribe feelings so much, but I...
Okay.
Well, this is also, so this is Confluence, and if we think about what Confluence, it will have probably single-family homes and smaller businesses that are the size of single-family homes. That's kind of the sorts, some of the sorts of developments that are there. And so I think front, balconies, front entryways, is there nothing in code that, that says you have to have a front entryway to a business? I mean, you would think you do. I would think you would.
Can you, you, can I seriously describe in two sentences max what you're trying to, what you're trying to achieve here?
Trying to achieve more opportunities for people to see other people on the street, right? So, you know, think about it in terms of, you know...
So why?
Why?
Yeah.
It promotes community. It's one of the reasons why Issaquah Highlands has front porches and not just letting everybody drive into their garage and have the garage be the prominent part of their houses.
Is there something in Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement that speaks to this that might explain it a little better?
Yes, I can look there. If, I'm not ready to give up on this one. I think it's important for this neighborhood.
I think a front, a front porch to me is different than a front entryway.
Well, that was trying to get to more the business piece of it as opposed to the residential piece because it's gonna have both. You know, one of the criticisms of, of Atlas was the lack of balconies. And I don't know the, I don't know the Urban Design Manual well enough to know whether that became a, a have to or whether that's just a want to. So let me, let me look at that one, you guys, because I think it can be salvaged.
Okay, I, I mean, I, I don't, I think it maybe can be salvaged too, but now that we're talking about bigger developments that don't have balconies and that being a problem, this Confluence is going to be presumably smaller developments. And so that balconies piece is not actually in the neighborhoods where we expect there to be larger developments, and we're not sure if that is in the Urban Design Manual.
I will double-check that for Gilman and Pickering. I just don't know, I just don't know. Sorry.
So we haven't had a conversation about, I think you said downzoning? Or did I translate what you said? This area, this, we upzoned this in the subarea plan.
We upzoned this when we included in Central.
That's right. And what did you say earlier this evening?
We're gonna, that the direction, the recommendation back from PPC is to take it back to the density pre-Central Issaquah. So we're not taking it out of Central Issaquah, but we're gonna take the zoning back.
And you're not talking about overlays like we did in the development areas? So there's, there's, okay. Okay, so there's, there's, there's gonna be heights, there's gonna be density, there's gonna be...
We're gonna take it back to, what, six years ago?
So there is the opportunity for, whereas an overlay will basically said, what you got is what you're gonna get.
Right.
And we're, we're saying, if somebody's underbuilt compared to what that previous zoning is, again, this hasn't been done yet, they have, there would be an opportunity to redevelop and, and go bigger because the zoning allowed for it.
Right.
So what you're trying to do is capture those within that smaller density and lower heights than what they're allowed today.
So this would take, so this would be a separate, you know, legislative action. It would be, there'd be public notice. You know, it's not being done as part of the visions. It is, it is on the city's expectation list. So we would move that forward at some point, and the community might say they don't want that.
What does that have to do, excuse me, I'm lost in the conversation. What does that have to do with the 2.2?
It doesn't.
Sorry, okay.
Well, there was, it's just the proper context. We don't know that we're gonna do that. It just creates more of a context because the redevelopment under the current capabilities is different than what's being, or being told is gonna be proposed. That's why it was important to me.
Okay. I see. Are you comfortable for now with what we were talking about?
What was that?
That he was gonna...
I was gonna go back and do some work on 2.2.
Because we might have a model from like the Highlands.
Yeah.
That you're, and then that was the sense of what you were trying to...
Right.
Okay.
And I, I agree with striking the, the ensure feelings part.
And it wasn't clear to me that we were talking about businesses, so it may even need to be a, I think you should clarify that it, businesses too.
Yep.
2.3, consider school walking routes to the elementary and middle schools to ensure they are safe and convenient. So I don't understand why this would even need to be in here because don't, so first of all, consider isn't, doesn't do anything. We, school walking routes, I'm not sure, how is that different from, different from just a sidewalk that you might put in? Is that gonna force somebody to put in a shortcut that's also safe and convenient? So there's gonna be lighting and there's gonna be, I'm, I'm...
Maybe. I mean, so, so you could, you could say that this is covered just by our street standards.
What about safe routes to schools?
What about safe routes to schools?
Is that, what does that impose?
Like, question mark.
You want to call a friend?
I mean, I've heard of safe route to schools. Have we codified anything related to safe routes to schools?
Now, I guess I'm asking that as well. It's, I know it's come up in the past. So that was just a note I have to myself on this one is, is this maybe, do we, have we citywide already adopted some policy or codified?
So here, here we know we have schools. And we have at least a school, and we might have a middle school as well. And so this is why this shows up in Confluence and doesn't show up in any of our other neighborhoods. You know? If, part of getting kids and parents to walk their kids to schools is it's safe, it's convenient, and it's prioritized. If we think we've got that covered through our street standards and our complete street stuff, we can, we can dump this out. It's up to you.
Well, it's not like I don't think that we should have safe, convenient routes to school. I just think that this creates an, a lot of these, I just, I just, this, I don't know why this feels different to me, as if there needs to be some separate route, separate consideration for routing schoolchildren's. It's different from what our pedestrian, street plans already are. And I'm, that seems like a, that seems like a different discussion. That seems like something that needs to involve the school district if they don't think that we're doing something right. Maybe that's part of our urban schools discussion as we work with the school district. I don't know.
Okay.
It would seem odd to me that we have to have an obligation such as, especially one that says, well, safe and, safe. Hopefully, we've got safeness codified in our walkways, in our, in our, already. So, and, so that's, that's one thing that jumped out to me. I'm, I'm, I'm not, well, I'm not a fan of the use of the word convenient.
Okay, so I'm hearing at least...
Very subjective.
Two votes to get rid of it? Okay.
Again, it's not...
Right.
Not getting rid of the idea that we should always have this. It's just, it's suggesting that we don't have it now, I think, that troubles me.
Right. Okay.
And if we don't, then I think we need to hear from the school district.
Okay.
Retain Gilman Village's connection to the small-town charm of Issaquah's past.
Seems unenforceable to me.
Take it out.
Yep, agreed.
I'll tell you what you meant.
Wow, wow, all right. So, so if somebody, if they bulldoze Gilman Village tomorrow and put up apartments, it's fine, right?
So how is this enforceable?
So...
I'm not, I'm not saying that I, I mean, it's sort of like the last one. I think I agree with the concept. I just, and maybe we should listen to you explain it, but...
So right now, what this is saying is you're gonna have to provide some semblance of what Gilman Village stands for. So it could be bulldozed. I mean, we're not saying that we're gonna preserve Gilman Village. I'd love if we preserve Gilman Village, but unless we're gonna get our checkbook out, I don't know how we're gonna accomplish that. So what this says, if somebody's going to take it out, those houses were moved once. You could either move it again, or you could somehow incorporate some piece of that into the architecture or the redevelopment of that project site. So it is, it is a way to pay homage to what I think our community feels is a very important piece of our community. So again, I think, I think it's not saying you have to get this. It's saying you have to think about it and do something that would, would show that this is where Gilman Village used to be.
So then I don't think the words are necessarily correct. If you're trying to...
And if, if you don't want to go there, that's, that's fine. I think, I'm not, I just think this is an important one.
I think the concept is important. I, I completely agree with that. I just don't, first of all, what you just said, that isn't how I would read this sentence. I don't, I mean, I think it's very subjective how you can retain a connection to charm, right? Which is, if you, if you look at the sentence, that's the requirement, so we retain a connection to the small time, small-town charm.
Okay.
I think this is, I think this is one that we need to work on.
Actually, I mean, I think that a lot of what you just said was more specific in terms of what we mean by this, and I agree with what you said, but to me, just very subjective.
Yeah, you're, you're trying to anticipate Gilman Village's demise. And what do we do to make sure we don't forget our history?
So are you okay with him working on that to see if he can pull out the actual intention?
Sure.
Okay.
You?
Sounds like Vicki. Newport and Gilman are convenient. Doesn't create an obligation, it makes a statement.
So let's assume that you were redeveloping Gilman Village, and you wanted to get from Locust kind of up to Gilman to take a bus. I mean, how do you get there? I mean, so unless, unless, unless there was a, I think what this is talking about is trying to, because the street grid is not, because you have the creek running through the neighborhood, you don't have necessarily the street grid connected in as many places as we do in other parts of the city. And so what this is saying is that if there's missing pieces of the street grid, we would expect there to be... expect there to be at least pet and bike connections. I know it doesn't say that.
So it sounds like you wanna say, provide connections to transit, provide, provide...
That transit amenities one from earlier.
Okay.
Something like that? Because I don't think what you're trying to say is, there's not a direct connection transit, that somebody has to build a separate, completely separate connection to get there.
That's what you just said.
Is that what you're saying?
You just said fill gaps.
Provide the missing links.
I don't think you can provide, you have to provide a missing link if it's not like your property frontage. You can't like, if I, if I'm, if I'm, I'm three blocks away from a transit opportunity, but my property isn't directly adjacent to that transit opportunity, then how do I provide a connection between my property and other properties?
So, if your property is here, and there's people here wanting to get to transit, which is on the other side of your property, what we're saying is, you're gonna provide an access way through your project that will be open for people to help facilitate their use of transit.
Okay. So then, on the property, I think it needs, I think this needs to be, needs to be cleared up, what you're trying to...
Okay.
You can't really do anything on anybody else's property, and I think you don't like, you can, you can only do so much on your own property, and it's...
Okay.
I see what you're trying to, I thought it was, provide connections from the subject property to transit. You're saying provide, allow for connections to be made through the subject property.
Right. Transit users to...
That's...
I'm, I'm okay with this one. I think it should be written in the same style as the other one, so provide connections or wording that you had just said. And I think also, if, if it is not near any transit, or if you're way distant from transit and you're not on a convenient route, then you have to just not check the box and write in your statement about why it doesn't apply to you.
Right.
We made it all the way through. So, in the interest of moving forward, there were, we had some comments that I wanted to ask before we go to public comment, I wanted to ask Keith about. We got an email from Ken Konigsmark, and he had two questions that I could pull out. One, one was, who decides and, who gets to decide? He says it's unclear to him, who gets to decide and how decisions will be made in determining if a developer truly meets these obligations. So, I think we've talked about that tonight, unless...
So that's the city gets to decide. And if the developer doesn't agree with that, then he can appeal that to hearing examiner, and the hearing examiner can decide if the city's overstepped its authority.
And I think we've also talked about, how is it decided? I think we've talked about looking to another source, for example, with recreation, open space, sources of material that might be...
Right. That might provide more clarity for the city to defend its position. I mean, so there's ways to shore up kind of how we make decisions.
Right.
I think the other piece was the Development Commission would use this as a tool to assess proposed developments.
And I think we've all acknowledged in our conversations that it's a, yeah, it's not a perfect right now. And then he speaks to, the word provide now has been changed to encourage, and I think we've had a fair amount of conversation about that tonight. And then we also got some correspondence from Raleigh Properties. And for discussion tonight, they mentioned, in the Park Strategic Plan number two, sound transit future locations, and number seven, Tibbetts Creek Trail System. And they had some comments, and my, feel free to chime in, but my, I guess my response at this time would be that that's part, that's part of the Park Strategic Plan, and that is, that is going to public for review, and that's where that discussion and feedback would happen.
I think because you guys took that out of part of the visions, it makes it less time sensitive for that particular issue to get resolved.
Okay. So unless there's anything else, I'm gonna call for public comment, and then we'll make our deliberate on our final recommendation. I'm hoping that's a short deliberation. Okay?
So the question, just to start thinking about, is, do you guys wanna try and squeeze in another kind of short...
Sure. It's one of the questions. Okay, public comment? I see two people who have...
Oh, you?
She has to wake up first. Mel.
Hi.
Thanks for staying.
You're welcome. Well, we were here till 10:30 last night, so it just seems like we're hanging out now.
Seems like the thing to do.
So, and thank you for working so hard on this, because eventually it does come to the Development Commission, and we get to be the ones to implement it. So I appreciate all the deliberations you're doing on everything. And you've covered a lot of things that I would've covered myself, so I'll try to keep it brief. So encourage, I think Yoda would say, there is, shall or shall not, there is no encourage. In the, the way I read all of these, they should all say, the developer shall blank. So the ones that say, the developer shall encourage a variety of housing, doesn't make any sense to me. So encourage means, hey, we really want somebody else to do it or something. What I would suggest in all those places, we switch out encourage with enhance. So for the variety of housing choices, it doesn't mean they have to provide a variety of housing choices in their project, but we want them to enhance that. So if a neighborhood has all multifamily flats and you're doing townhomes, or if they're all big units and you're doing micro units, something like that, you're enhancing what goes on. So I think in almost all those cases, encourage could change to enhance, and then it becomes a shall, but it provides some flexibility without requiring a specific. Pickering 1.3, and I don't think you've covered this, but Pickering 1.3 about provide plazas, trails, cafes, and outdoor seating, I would suggest for Pickering 1.3 and Gilman 1.3 that you change to the language that's used, say, for example, in West Newport 1.1. So, West Newport 1.1 says, provide private amenities, for example, parks, trails, and so forth, that leaves it open as to what they can provide. The way 1.3, 1.3 is written, provide plazas, trails, not cafes now, and outdoor seating. It says you...
Not as examples.
Pardon?
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah. But it says you have to provide those, the way I read it. So every project has to provide those. If it's a, provide amenities, for example, then it leaves it open to how you're gonna make that fit. And then you can have cafes as a, for example, if you want, instead of a have to. The East Lake 2.1, I heard a quick mention, talking about the connections to regional trails, I heard a quick mention of connections and enhancements, or, because we just did Gilman Lofts last night, and that trail, there's a connection to the trail from Gilman Lofts, but there's also the end of the trail kind of where there's a plaza that was built as part of the development agreement. But that's a really important part of that trail right there, where you come into Issaquah, you hit Gilman. That's a real critical thing. I think the key here would be keeping it just as connections, because I've, if I've got a property that's trail, we want a convenient connection, but we don't wanna make that developer put in a plaza or something like that. We just wanna make sure their residents can get on and off the trail and make that connection. So, to the extent that I heard something other than connections, I'd, I'd say just And then, Confluence 2.1, I wasn't sure where you ended up on that, but that idea of providing public access to the creek, to me, it sounded like every property had to provide public access, public access, which to me started to sound like a taking of somebody's property, which I, you were already talking about that a lot, I think. So I was worried about that one. If it was left in there, it could be problematic, so. And thank you very much for, again, all your hard work on this.
Thank you. Connie?
As soon as the sun comes out, we need to bring your long underwear to your knees.
I'll remember that next time.
Yeah. A little chili, could loan you a jacket? I have one. Okay. So, the connections is imperative to have in the visions, because what I have found is, when the developments go through, for some reason, staff doesn't always put in the connections, like it doesn't seem as important. And I think that getting the mesh of pedestrian and bike along with sidewalks and streets is, is so core that it won't function appropriately without it, and it needs to be reemphasized. So I would include it in here, which, okay, I'm gonna go slightly off. East Lake, I think is East Space Lake, like East Lake's Mammoth Parkway, not East Lake, because it's East Lake's Mammoth Parkway. And East Lake has single-family housing in it, and we don't, I was looking at the zoning the other day, and we don't discuss the single-family housing section in there as part of the visions in that section. For developer obligations, I don't know what that would mean, but I just thought it needed to be brought up. I didn't think Confluence should stay in the central Issaquah plan at all. The prior zoning is very close to what you're trying to do, and it's already written, it's called the MRR, Mixed Use Residential Zone. And so I think it's awkward in the position that we're trying to put it. PPC disagreed with me, but I still think I'm right. And then, my biggest thing is, I thought we were making progress, and then I started watching Development Commission, and it's, they're still using what is written in the code precisely. And I'm concerned that it's gonna be really hard to get staff, and you all, and the public, and the developers, up to that 30,000-foot sort of vision level of this is what we want the community to be in 30 or 40 years. And so we must put in these pieces in order to have success. And in my brain, it's a step one, before you even have a pre-app meeting, the developers and staff sits down and says, this is our vision for this neighborhood, and this is what is gonna happen there. And this is, before you even draw anything, this is what we need you to do. And while these don't say shall, if they do get both staff and the developers and the community into the conversation, looking at everything through this lens, then I think we actually have some chance for change and to make it better. If we do not, we are in the exact same position that we were before. And so I don't understand, right now, how it's gonna work, how staff's attitude is gonna change, how the process is going to be written down so that it, it, everybody looks at this first because they know this is gonna happen, because we don't really have a mechanism at this point in time. So I don't wanna have wasted all of this time in doing all the work without the rest of the toolset that we need, and I, so far, haven't heard how that's gonna happen. So, if it could work, it could be brilliant. So, I don't know. That sort of sounds like a split decision. There you go.
Thanks, Connie. Okay. So I, I'm gonna toss out my thoughts, and then you guys can follow and make a decision. I really like the suggestion of changing the housing to enhance the variety. That seems like a significant improvement in the language, because then you are required to do something, and you are, for all the reasons, I'm not gonna say it all again, I like that. I like the suggestion, I like all of Mel's suggestions a lot, the housing, Pickering 1.3, using the West Newport 1.1 language, providing amenities, and, well, I was gonna say that East Lake 2.1, keep it just connections. I don't, so, let me just finish. I, that's interesting. I think it needs to be, I'm not quite sure why, I don't know that I need to understand tonight, but it's interesting that you fell on the different, had different thoughts there. Confluence, the public access equals taking, that probably needs to be discussed with legal counsel.
Green necklace.
We did on the Confluence line, we just, we are gonna refer to green necklace.
Okay. Then, I agree that we need to put connections in the visions. I don't know what to say about the single-family housing. Confluence shouldn't be in the plan. I, PC didn't agree. So, we have made a lot of suggested changes, and I think we have some good suggestions that come, came from the public. And I came into tonight really hoping and wishing that this would be the last meeting, wondering if the thing to do is have one more meeting. But, man, oh, man, I wish we could have a second one in May, just for this, just so that we can get this done in May. Like, I think we, I would like, I, that's, those are my thoughts. So I will, I, I think there's too, we, there's too much left that needs to be revised.
You need to see it one more time.
That we can't move it forward to the full council, it'll just be ours, so...
It's not in a state that we can refer to the full council.
Yep.
This committee needs another session. And I'm willing to do what's needed to stick to the timeline that we were shooting for.
Agreed. Thank you.
Okay. So on the timing issue, I'm not a regular member of this committee. I probably won't participate again.
I'm gonna look at my calendar.
But, but maybe.
If you just agree that it needs another committee touch, that's probably a good idea from you.
I agree that it needs another committee touch. Should I do my other comments?
Sure.
Okay. I, I agree with the suggestion from Commissioner Morgan about the enhance, the word enhance, but I think it doesn't quite get at what we want it to say, which I think should also have at the neighborhood scale, because it's, we want it to enhance, but again, it's not only that we want to enhance on your property, which is one of those issues, that we want to enhance at the neighborhood scale, the diversity of housing. So I, I would be fine with changing enhance, I think that is an improvement, and I would also add the scale for, for that one. There may be some other ones that the scale would help clarify, too. There may be some other ones that the scale would help clarify, too. And overall, I think this has come a really long way. I do think it needs one more touch, just because we recommended a lot of changes, and including a lot of changes to how the green necklace is developed, as well as the developer obligations. But I think it has come a long way, I think it reflects a ton of work on behalf of the staff, as well as the public, and the commission's planning policy, and Park's, Park's board. So, overall, just wanted to make sure that we call that out, that, to thank them again for all of their hard work, and that this reflects a lot of really good effort.
I would agree with the, some of the language changes that were suggested during public comments that my colleagues here have already echoed. Those language changes, I would agree with those. One additional ask I would have, when it comes back, is if, and you've done it already, and maybe this is more on, what in the CIDS maybe shouldn't be enhanced? For, if there are items here that, and I felt there, I think there are a number of them, more than one, where it might make sense that stronger language, or some type of enhancement or update to the CIDS, and have it applied to all of central area, would be appropriate. So that would be a nice-to-have, Keith.
Mm-hmm.
Do you understand?
Yeah, I wrote that down.
And...
Got its own little box at the top, yeah.
So should we have Keith and Dan send out dates to the regular committee in May? Dates that we can get together, and if we all three can't get together, then we can get some? Maybe Councilmember Hunt? Does that work?
Yeah, we'll need to find it up in, up here, too. Okay, thank you all.
Thanks so much. We're adjourned.